...release and a bond release for common driveway in West Berlin Road as well as you know waiver, waiver of the turnout and turnaround requirements which... So we've discussed this twice in the last few months. It came up in 2012 and it was when I was on the board with John and Doug and Jennifer and it wasn't resolved then, which is too bad. So at the last meeting, we all said we'd go look at the site. I think Eric's seat was the only where we looked at it recently at the last meeting. And we also wanted to send out a letter to the butters and get their feedback.
I also reached out to Chief Menzner again to get his recommendations for waiving the turnaround and turnout. So and basically he sent me an email saying that he recommended the turnaround area be installed and paved, but the turnout towards the front of the driveway could be waived.
So the turnout is opposite the first driveway. The turnaround area is there between the driveway on the left in that red, the new red house in back.
You're calling that what turnaround?
Yeah, the turnaround is, is the one between your driveway, assume, and your driveway. So I guess we could...
How big is that supposed to be?
On the plan, it's saying thirty by forty.
Feet? Thirty by forty?
And it's gonna be big enough for an emergency vehicle to turn around?
Yeah, so a fire truck. And that's the biggest, that's the biggest truck. So you know, going back and looking at what Jennifer wrote, you know, Jennifer Bernie, the last town planner, you know, she, I mean, basically, it sounds like the last time we discussed this in 2012, the applicant, which is, you know, Apple Valley Homes, was saying that the, both the turnout and the turnaround had been prepared with gravel. And I guess, you know, from my vid, but when, but when Jennifer went out with Fred Hamway and they did a, you know, they dug, they didn't find any gravel in the, in either of these areas. And from my site visit this afternoon, you know, basically you have your asphalt there and your grass there. So it's not even, it's not even prepared gravel, you know, at the same grade. So you know, your tire would go off and it's like three or four inches handed in.
So do, well, so which house do you guys live in?
I live in the red house.
And I love the one right below the red house.
You wanna introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Andy Littlerooming.
Patty Ross.
So Patty, your house, if you drive in...
Yeah.
It's not right there on the main drag.
Correct.
That's the next one on the left. Yours is the new house, straight dead ahead.
You keep driving straight, wanting my driveway.
How do, for instance, oil trucks, where do they back out?
They usually will back out of my driveway into hers, is usually what they do.
So they'll back out of yours into hers and then three-point turn, no way?
Yeah.
I've read your letter.
Uh huh.
Do you have similar feelings or do you wanna summarize kinda how you're looking at it?
Well, I didn't know that there was even supposed to be anything there because on the plan, even on the thing that we, we got sent in the mail, it's not even highlighted. The one that's highlighted is at the end of the driveway. I happened to notice it later and I just didn't pay any, I assumed that it was, it had been discussed because it wasn't highlighted in the letter. So I didn't even think about it when I wrote, I just wrote a letter saying that the, the gravel is not going that side.
Yeah, no, the paving looks good.
Yeah.
You know, all the rest of the work, I think, looks good. So I think that's all been, you know, Jennifer had some pictures here from 2012. So I think a lot of the recommendations were made, like the driveway is now sloping to the side so the water isn't coming out of West Berlin Road. It's going off to the lawn and to the gravel trenches.
Yeah.
So that's good. You know, these are her pictures. So there's the, the smaller turnout and then this is that larger one that is spray painted, right? There's the for sale sign for your lot. So you know...
That's all grass now, right?
Yeah, it's grass. It is grass. So Jennifer's saying from this site visit with Fred, they did a dig, they dug down and there was no gravel. So it's just kind of, and that's what it looks like now. It's just kind of alone or existing fill. You know, so, you know, for me, I think it's, I think it's between, you know, Chief Menzner's saying, you know, the driveway is wide enough that we could forego that. He thinks this is really important. So for me, it's, you know, do we, do we want it to be, you know, do we wanna require that he install it in crushed stone, which he admits that was part of this original agreement that was never documented? There's just no information on it. Doug's the sole repository. Larry Delaney was there, he's not gonna weigh in and it's not in any documents. So it's kind of a, you know, it's a he said, he said, she said type of thing. So Chief Menzner says we should do this in asphalt. I think a compromise could be that it's, it's done in, in crushed stone rather than asphalt.
So can you put loam over there and grow grass or you have to keep maintaining the crushed stone?
That's a question I have too.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's another thing that, who's gonna maintain that? I mean, that means, cause well, I, I have a crushed stone driveway. One whack of a plow, you know, I'm bringing in a couple of years of crushed stone, thirty by forty, whatever it is, is a hell of a lot of rock to bring in every year.
Right. So this is, you know, your, your existing asphalt goes up to it about that long?
Uh huh.
So basically, that's gonna stay, they're just gonna add, they're gonna add next to the driveway kind of the, they could add crushed stone or asphalt. And it's really, you know, what, what, what would you prefer? I mean, I don't, I think you wanna just do clean crushed stone. I don't think it has to, I mean, I guess it should be plowed in the winter for the plow.
So that's, that's gonna cost for us, you know?
So that's why, you know, we wanted you here. I mean, the board might say there's no need for a turnout. I, I think there should be a turnout there. I'm willing to consider doing it in crushed stone. I don't know how everybody else feels, but between those two options, if that's what we're gonna vote on, you know, would you rather that it's asphalt or crushed stone?
Yeah. I mean, I've never seen anybody have a problem turning around trucks. I have deliveries for my barn all the time, large, large trucks. Nobody has a problem getting in and out. So I'm not so sure that we really need a turnout.
And they haven't had a problem because they're utilizing neighbors driveway or vice versa?
They're using my driveway.
Okay.
And across from my driveway, I think where you're proposing this turnaround, it's all cleared. I mean, they just...
Okay.
Go onto that dirt if they need to.
Yep.
And oftentimes, they don't need to.
If it was asphalt, we could set up a couple basketball hoops and that would be more, more temporary.
No, it's alright.
And that across?
Less asphalt, the better. Too much pollution already.
Why don't you make him bring in loam and fill and bring it up to grade with the, with the driveway and plant grass seed? And that way, it's flat.
At least it's flat, it's not an indentation kind of thing.
Yeah. And it doesn't have rock and we can, it's less expensive for him, it looks nicer for us.
You're not paving it.
Not paving it.
I'm sorry, you're not plowing it.
Well, yeah, so that brings up the issue about the winter time plowing. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't think, you know, a big fire truck wants to get off the asphalt into, into, you know, grass or loam in any time of year. You know, it's probably not a good idea. So it, it needs to be a prepared surface, like they're gonna take out the loam that's there and they're gonna, you know, put in crushed stone, compact it. That's, that's what a huge, I don't know how many tons the fire truck is, but that's what that vehicle needs. They can't, it's not like a hay wagon or a horse wagon pulling off. So there is the issue of getting the grades right. So you're not going off, but it needs to be a material. And, you know, what is, what is, what is his name? You know, John says, you know, he agreed hard packed gravel for turnouts. So, you know, he has agreed to that.
Can you give me a definition of what hard packed gravel is exactly?
So it's, it's, uh, it's probably like your driveway, it's probably, basically what, Eric is an engineer, but what I'd say is they're going to dig eight inches down and they're gonna get something like crushed stone or dense grade and they're going to put it in there and then they're gonna compact it.
Was that, that was, was that you that was up, with my eye?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we all came, went over it, it'll take a look.
So you saw my driveway then?
Yeah.
Which was like, I don't know what they call that, crushed?
Well, that's crushed stone. I don't, I don't know, I don't know, you know, when you, if you built your house and built your driveway, you know, some people just put like three inches of crushed stone on their driveway.
Yeah, that's all that is.
Do we have some, sir, are you part of this discussion? No?
Both different.
Okay.
So if it, so this is, so common versus shared driveway. Shared driveway is two houses, no turnaround is required, right? No matter how long it is, even if it's a mile long or so, but because it's three houses, it becomes a common driveway. And do co- common driveways, they require a turnaround? Is that...
Yeah, they do. A paved turnaround.
But in this application, they could've gotten away through code with a shared driveway.
With a shared driveway?
We had the conversation and said, you know what, we want you to upgrade it to a common. And then we don't have anything documented.
Yeah, there's, there's this hearsay...
Exactly.
That the planning board said if you join the first, this house with this shared driveway, we will let you do the turnouts in crushed stone.
I mean, why would he come up with this story? I wouldn't say it's hearsay. I mean, there must've been a deal. I don't think you...
No, it's just, it's...
There's no documentation.
It's just, it's odd that there's nothing documented. So, yeah, so it's, I mean, okay, so it's, uh, so right now, I mean, he admits that it's supposed to be, you know, crushed stone. So we're not, you know, we could just stick to the plan. This turnout needs to go in and that needs to go in in crushed stone. Chief Menzner is willing to forego this one. He wants this one in asphalt. So it's, you know, how does everybody feel about that?
Excuse me, he's willing to, to forego the first one down by West Berlin Road? Like not have anything there?
Yeah.
So why? Not there?
Cause it's a wide enough road.
He thinks the width there is wide enough, but down towards the end, towards your house, there needs to be ample room for an actual turnaround.
Yeah.
Not just a pass through.
So common, yeah, common driveways require a turnout so cars can pass each other.
You're also supposed to be twelve feet wide. This is sixteen feet wide, which is why really the turnout's not necessary. You can get two cars through sixteen feet.
But then they also require a turnaround at the end.
That's cause it ends right there, right? That's why you have to...
Yeah. So it's sixteen feet here. I think on the plans, it's supposed to be eighteen. I think there was a typo that Jennifer mentioned, but he's willing to, you know, overlook that one.
So I think we can all, I mean, should we vote separately or do we, I mean, we can agree that we don't need the turnout? We're just talking about the turnaround?
I think there needs to be a decision made just because it's in our rules and regulations. So the board needs to literally, I need to have it in my meeting minutes that the board, the board made a decision to waive that turnout. And then whatever decision you make.
I'd make a motion to waive the turnout in its entirety, the item that's closer towards West Berlin Road.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Alright, so now we're just talking about the turnaround.
I think one of the things I was considering, and it sounds like you guys as a part of the community, have an understanding that people can back into each other's driveways, but in the event that someone sells their home and there's a next owner, what if they're not okay? Cause I, I went in today and I, I was uncomfortable turning into your driveways and I, I pulled into like the four inch drop and turn around and, you know, it was a little uncomfortable. But more so getting it right for the town as opposed to necessarily getting it right for right now is, is kinda my thought.
I, I see what you're saying, cause I get it from my driveway all the time.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I agree that it'd be nice to have something, but you know.
So if, if you were given a choice to say, i- if, if there was a given, like we're gonna have something, you, you folks would prefer no gravel, crushed stone would be better, right? Or you're saying asphalt?
No asphalt.
I do not want asphalt.
Okay.
And, and Chief Menzner suggested paved and asphalt, just so you know. I don't know if you saw that letter.
No, I did not see that letter.
I mean, his, his, he was saying that, you know, he could live without the turnout, but wanted a paved, what'd he say? I feel that durable turnaround area is vital to the fire department and really should be required for this driveway, the branch to the firehouse on the left. Oh, okay, well, he starts turning with the turnout, but I mean, he thinks that the turnaround should be paved, just so you know. So our options are paved, crushed stone, or nothing, right?
Yeah. I mean, is anybody in favor of nothing?
I'm leaning towards something. I, I think it's, I've been up there a couple of times, I think it's wide enough and I, I don't see, I don't see an issue with a large truck trying to turn around at the end of that driveway. Whether that truck utilizes one of the house's driveways, goes off onto the grass a little bit, I would not be in favor of that type of approach on every driveway, but given the topography, given the flatness, given the fact that there's no brush there, there's no trees there.
And the history.
Yeah. So that, that's, that's where I kinda should go on this one.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you, you, it's not oil sized trucks. I think you really have to consider...
Fire and emergency and quick, no, I get it.
Are wide, you know, the visibility's bad, you know, backing up off into, you know, this, into the sand, you know, just isn't, isn't a good idea at all.
So if we went with crushed stone, if that's what we said, you know, um, so the homeowners would be responsible for filling that, like you said, you know, after a couple of years of plow, cause I assume that means it has to be plowed.
Mm-hmm.
After a couple, after a couple of years of plowing, knocking the stones off has to be...
It's not a public road, it's, it's a private responsibility. So yeah, they pick up a burden for it.
And with the asphalt, it's more of an aesthetic versus it's more sustainable.
Less burden, yeah.
So there's a trade-off either way. And, um, cause I mean, I, I completely respect that it's, you know, you guys have, that's your road and y'all are dealing with it more than anybody else is. But I think with, what we're trying to figure out is overall, if we made this decision here and then this happened again, we'd be setting precedent. So we wanna make sure that we get it right for everybody.
John, wanna weigh in?
I'm, I'm leaning towards the gravel myself, but I think it's very important that, like it's the current homeowners, cause we don't know who will ever go there in the future. That's unknowable. But weigh their opinions pretty strongly and David said you've been up there and aside from being uncomfortable to backing into people's driveways, you could pretty much maneuver around there, okay?
I thought so.
I mean, I wasn't sure when I turned around in your driveway, I guess, when I went.
How long is the driveway from where the turnout is back to the road?
The turnaround?
Uh, yeah, turnaround, so I don't know. It's not long.
It's like a thirty thousand. Like a tenth of a mile, maybe.
I think it's five hundred feet.
Yeah.
It's like football field?
Yeah.
Could the fire truck back up out of there?
Can't speak to a fire truck. I'm pretty sure I could send my Silverado down at about thirty miles an hour without a problem backwards.
Yeah. Ambulance could probably back up. I guess the big question is the fire truck.
Yeah.
Okay, um, you know, I, I'd be looking for a motion that, um, you know, he, that, that has it paved in gravel. I mean, he, he mentions he agreed to that. So whether, you know, that's hearsay or not, you know, that sounds like a compromise and a consensus view for this, for this, you know, this old issue.
How big of that to gravel is it, would it be?
Well, the existing driveway is eighteen feet and so, uh...
Forty.
You're gonna be adding twenty-two more feet to the width at, you know, right in front of your drive.
Actually, are you sure about that? It's not twelve feet and then with the width and forty in length?
Okay. So, okay, so you're adding twelve feet and...
Eighteen, twelve is thirty, the width is thirty, the length is forty.
Yeah.
So he's basically, he'll go twice what it is almost. Well, what'd you say, twelve feet, hope extra this way and then forty there?
Hard packed gravel is crushed.
What's an...
Hard packed gravel, crushed.
Yeah.
Probably like a Romanesque type. But it's, it's not asphalt, correct?
What, this...
Who would call it asphalt?
This is the chief. Right. I mean, I agree with John. At least you have a, that calls for something that he committed to. It's a compromise between what is best and what the homeowners are really passionate about.
What about, does it need to be a lawyer to split change of width?
No.
What's that?
You gotta have it.
Push the issue.
You know.
It's a yes or no.
Okay. So, so if you guys were required to have one, you would prefer crushed stone?
Sounds like they're conferring about it.
I, yeah, I mean, I would, I just spoke to Patty here and I think that, you know, she, her house, she has to actually stare at it. I, I don't really see it from where I, my house is, so if she would prefer a crushed stone, oh, you know, I'll go on the record to say that I would prefer pavement, but I would...
For maintenance.
For maintenance, only cause I'm cheap. I don't wanna have to finger out, but I, I have no problem with gravel. If that is what Patty would like to know.
I mean, I, yeah, like I appreciate the history of it and the fact you guys aren't gonna live without it, but if other people move in and somebody, if you want somebody pulling down their driveway...
That's the thing. And, cause if that, you know, if they move away, I mean, if people don't, you know, somebody could put a gate across that driveway, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Now they're back in my yard or backing all the way down the driveway.
That was what I offered in the first.
So, so I'd, I'd make a motion that we take the course of action consistent with what the applicant is proposing with respect to the turnout and do...
Turnaround.
Turnaround, sorry. And improve it with a, a gravel and not an asphalt surface.
So, um, just, just as a sidebar, you know, is there any detail on here, Erica, that you sent up? Can you just give a specification?
Nice of you to type it wrong. Um, I'd have to look at our...
What's the wait number?
We could just say Fred Hamway's, Fred Hamway's recommendations, you know, in terms of preparation.
Okay, sure.
Just a follow-up. So that's just an amendment to what you said, David, that we're, we're gonna follow Fred's recommendations for how deep the crushed stone is under that type.
Sure. Make a motion that we follow Fred Hamway's recommendations as to the, the depth on the turnaround, um, which would be consistent with a, a gravel preparation and not an asphalt.
So I'm not sure which is which or if it was just an amended first, so I'm gonna second both motions as made by David.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All right. Any guests? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more question I have is that, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a little, just a rectangle of gravel, is that right? Basically next to the driveway. It's gonna be like the driveway and then twelve feet by forty.
More or less, but it's like a little slope on, on the plan. It doesn't kick out ninety degrees from the road. It comes off at an angle and it comes back in towards the bound.
So does it, is it gonna be like a rounded thing? If we could round it?
Yeah.
I mean, if they were rounded, it would look nicer.
Yeah, I mean, asphalt's gonna, it would be more kind of geom, could be more geometric, but yeah, it's showing, you know, it needs to have curves for it to really work for visuals.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, and, cause you're where there's, our Septic Hill is there too.
Septic Hill.
Such a great one.
West Berlin Road is very beautiful. Great. We're glad you have there.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you guys.
Okay, sure. I can do the same as you all.
So that was, of course, as I was talking about the turnaround, we'd welcome on release to push that back until this is in or...
Yeah, okay. So let's let that project your lesson and everybody take notes. It's eight o'clock, the Mobility Committee. Come up and join us. Bring your chairs. How are you?
And for the new members, I'm Mary Chumo, Gordon Taylor, Peter Ross, and so Green can't be here tonight here with the Mobility Committee. And Leslie Breeze is on Public Ways Safety Committee. So we've been reaching out to all boards and committees for feedback on our report that we would like to get out as soon as possible. And so that's why we're here tonight, is to get any kind of feedback, especially where some of our administrative recommendations have to do with planning.
Can we review this together?
Okay.
We are working on, we are working on our, some of our development rules and regulations. So you had some recommendations related to that?
Mm-hmm.
Go through those.
Yes, we, in your subdivision rules and regs, we recommend requiring sidewalks along the frontage of the existing roads.
Right, so currently, we have a requirement for sidewalks inside the development and sometimes they get waived and money is given and that happened, you know, this last, with North.
Right. Well, we don't wanna look at it that way because then it kind of looks like extortion. But frontage is connecting. And, but in some situations, it is, it doesn't make sense to have a frontage sidewalk. And so then comes our...
Like that Houghton Pond?
I'm sorry?
Like that Houghton Pond?
Well, you know, Houghton Farm was an interesting one because that's a real problematic area for walkers on Sugar Road.
I know it all too well.
And the curve, the property, I mean, the Houghton Farms developers own that corner.
And they had agreed to knock the stone back?
Right.
Or feed if I recall correctly?
Right, but wouldn't it have been nice?
For it to happen?
Wouldn't it be, well, they're slow going over there. But wouldn't it be nice to have a pathway there to get people around that bend, go across, now I do know that there's a, a, another resident in the old house, the antique house, but to extend it to Golden Run so that people can then access the Powder Hill Conservation Trail. So you would have a connection.
The fire pond's too close to the road though.
Well...
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that, I don't know if you know, that corner, maybe it doesn't have to be along the street, but it goes into the development around that...
Right, right.
Fire pond.
Which is really our preference, is to have these meandering pathways and not having sidewalks flush up against the road.
How about so...
But that is a preference. So our other recommendation is to also in the, in your rules and regs, have an In-Lua clause, so that if it doesn't seem practical to put in a walkway along the frontage within a subdivision, whatever, then the developer is required to make payments for sidewalks somewhere else in town.
How do we deal with it now in our rules and regs? Is that just a conversation we have with each special apartment, but it's not in the rules and regs?
It is for inside the development.
Okay, but not, but again, not for...
So like at Century Mill, there are nice sidewalks that go from the bus stop at the gate all the way up and around each cul-de-sac.
But it's a rule and reg, so it can be waived if they ask for a waiver, which I know will be granted with the, well, it would be really nice in lieu of doing this, if you were to make a gift, it would be fun.
So what?
That's how it's been working.
And I will say that towns that do have this In-Lua clause also have prices for frontage. They actually have, Stowe has, what they charge for internal sidewalks within the subdivision, and a different amount for frontage sidewalks. So that if you're going to do an In-Lua, then you might want to think about then what we need to have a number that we're going to charge them, because otherwise it's just the goodwill of the developer to decide what he's going to pay you.
So it's a square foot rate?
Yeah, per linear foot.
So it's cheaper to do these paths in the development, because it's all been kind of regraded as part of the roadwork, but it's harder on the street?
I'm going to guess that, just from seeing how Stowe and Sudbury has charges, that they charge more for furnished than for internal, so whatever the reason.
I mean, what, you know, what I, you know, I see the nice sidewalk that kind of ends at Bose and Applefield Farm, and it's like, oh, it'd be really nice if we could continue that somehow.
And the town pays for that from In-Lua money instead.
But if the entrance is a country road, that it doesn't really aesthetically fit, I mean...
Yeah, I think there are going to be cases where there are wetlands, you know, like Century Mill has those wetlands along Spectacle Road that would have been, it would have been hard to put, I think they're on both sides of the roads, it would have been hard to do a sidewalk there or a pathway.
I mean, because, so if you get like, I'm trying to think, Oak Trail is kind of, if I can remember, it's kind of like cliff along the side of the, the road. I mean, does one make sense for a walkway? So like, does it make sense to have the In-Lua if it doesn't make sense to have a walkway in the first place? I don't know.
Well, Oak Trail's interesting, because I'm assuming it's a lane, like Danforth, so they don't have sidewalks. And I know when I came here previously to your board and discussed that we would like to see sidewalks on all roads, including lanes, and that was a bit of resistance. When we put out our survey and we asked the respondents, where do you want to see sidewalks? And for lanes, very, very low percentage. And so we're not requesting that walkways be in all roads.
So you said, what, I'm looking at it here, you said major streets?
But you have to look at Danforth, and you have to look at Oak Trail, and it's, those are big developments.
Oak Trail is across from the International.
Right.
So you say...
Does that have an internal sidewalk?
So you say major roads, that's...
Well, um...
I forget, I read your definitions at one point. It's not just a state, one eleven, one ten, one seventeen, major is like Harvard Road?
That was a state road too.
Harvard.
Water, water, Harvard eighty-five. There were what were called county roads, and when the counties disappeared, the state took responsibility for it, so effectively state roads as well.
Okay, so and then major roads is something besides?
Well, the definition of the roads are, is, are, than the bylaws, and the major roads that we're recommending for shared shoulders and walkways are on all the other routes that Gordon had just mentioned.
Which makes sense there. Definitely makes sense there.
But the definition for major should really come from bylaws.
Yeah.
And that has to do with the number of...
I know I read it somewhere.
...vehicle is passing through and all that.
Yeah, I mean, it totally makes sense for one ten and one seventeen.
But as far as aesthetics, you know, we don't expect to see walkways all over town. It doesn't make sense, and in a lot of cases it's probably not possible. And what we recommend is that if a neighborhood wants a walkway within their area, their neighborhood, then to petition each other and, and, you know, start it up that way. Our recommendation is really looking at, what we found is that people want to connect to place. They want to connect to all of the conservation areas, the recreation areas, they want to connect to town building schools, and most of those, not the conservation, most run one seventeen.
Yes, for me, a great example would be trying to get a connection from the corner of Water Aquatic and Main Up to Memorial Field, you know, on either side or both sides. I mean, there's partially one in front of the safety center, there's a sidewalk there, but then it just tears up.
And that's a quick fix, and that's one of the specific conditions that we mentioned, is that short connection. Because at the public forum we held, we had members from Boston do a presentation about the properties around the Sawyer and Emerson schools, and they created three walking loops, a one-twenty-five mile walking loop and two half-mile walking loops, starting from the senior center and going all the way to Memorial Field. And what would complete that connection would be a sidewalk going up Water Aquatic. It's a very easy, quick fix. I talked to Harold Brown about it. It would cost about forty thousand dollars to put in a sidewalk, and I think as far as easement rights, you know, it probably wouldn't be a problem getting, getting one put in there. But that's where you want to make those connections. And where you're talking about a Village Obelé going in, you're talking about the Smith property being developed, you're talking about potentially a lot going on within the town center. And then you add to that the state takeover of one seventeen, and then you, it becomes more complicated.
The proposed, the proposed...
Well, yeah.
That's, that's sounding very like, you know, like it's happening next year.
Well, unfortunately financially, it's just such a, you know, wow, that it's hard to see the other side, and I really am urging this committee and, and all the other boards and committees to look at what could or would happen, because it's a big unknown as far as the state taking over one seventeen.
So you're saying if the state takes over, it's harder to get sidewalks in after?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's, it's, first of all, I talked with Harold Brown, and he said, you know, one seventeen is really, it's in pretty good condition, so we probably won't see anything happening for at least fifteen years as far as redoing. They're going to do a major overhaul of the interchange, but that's separate, and that's going to be happening relatively soon, but...
What are they going to do?
I have no idea.
Are they going to add lanes up on the highway?
I, I don't know. I spoke with one of the representatives at Green Engineering, which is the engineering firm, a couple, I don't know, last summer, you know, so a lot of people surveying around the interchange, and I gave him our wish list in terms of bicycling and pedestrian facilities, and it was a pretty hard sell. He said, his comment was, I, I was out there and I didn't see anybody out walking, but...
Well, you can't really walk there.
The big issue there is getting a sidewalk under four ninety-five.
Absolutely.
If there was a sidewalk, you'd probably see people walking.
Well, and the bigger issue is...
Well, you see that guy, and you see that guy, I guess he's from Bolton Manor...
Earl, yeah, his little scooter, yeah.
With the flag, and he's on the side of the road, and it's, it's wonderful and frightening at the same time.
I have given seniors, rides back to the senior center who walk to the country cover. I mean, just because we don't see them all the time, people out walking, they are. But you need to add to that the forty B development that's going on over at Sugar Road. You're talking about Village Obelé, which would be in all those pockets, and all of a sudden you're going to have a lot of stuff going on that people are going to want to get to.
Yeah, so we're like living in Bolton now, and we do have to realize that a lot more people will be living here in the next thirty years, and it's going to change.
I think the Village Obelé will help, because part of that is walkways and mobility concerns.
But we need to connect.
Yeah, definitely.
It'll be great for the development to put in their lovely sidewalks and all their, but then are they connecting so that people can get to them?
Yeah.
Also, from the bicycling side of it, again, you've got a, one seventeen is pretty, pretty scary now that they've added those extra lanes, the interchange, and, you know, a lot of bike groups, bike through town. And a couple of years ago, the planner got bike racks that were put in the schools, in the library, one here, they're not racks, what are they called?
Well, your bike.
So with the assumption that people will ride their bikes to these places. So we have to, we want to be able to see people feel comfortable riding a bike in this town, because I think they should, I think it's right. But, so anyway, I can go on.
You know, my, my daughter is, you know, she's almost thirteen, and she and her friends walk from the school to the library for, they have special programs, and they love that feeling of freedom, you know, you want that in a small town, that your kids aren't always cooped up, and, you know, so that ability that they can walk safely together, they can cross intersections, you know, because they're growing up. And I know, you know, if the salt box has some type of place with candy or food, that they're going to want to walk there, you know, either, you know, from school or from our house, so, you know, it's, it'd be great to kind of improve that.
If any of you have walked through the town center, it's a blast. Try it.
But, just as an observation, I don't know how many of you have been in Rockton, which is a town with a really busy road through the middle, but it has a really nice town center. They've been there, very nicely, sidewalks and cafes and things.
I mean, I totally agree. I mean, with, with the Obelé, you know, I feel like we're going to have things that people want to walk to, and, you know, guided tours through the town center with a sidewalk, I definitely think that all that would be great.
Right, and, you know, the forty B going in Sugar, okay, we'd have to convince them to put their frontage sidewalk, but the state owns the land from that property to one seventeen, so that we need to put the pressure on them, and I do know there are wetlands involved, but we need to put the pressure on them to extend a walkway out to one seventeen. Either that or configure something where you're walking through the development to the back end of the Clinton Savings Bank building, however it's done. But other administrative recommendations that we've had is, we sort of took the idea from Sudbury, and I noticed Stowe also has one. Sudbury's is called a public ways access permit, and it's a general bylaw for them. In Stowe, they have very similar wording in their subdivision rules and regs, so it could go either way. But basically what it, what it does is, it states that if the town can prove, or if the town feels that there's going to be significant impact to the roadways along a development going in, that they can ask the developer to make improvements to the, to the roadways. An example that I can think of with Century Mill is that they could have cleaned up the wide angled intersection at Century Mill and South Bolton Road. It would have been a good opportunity to get that taken care of. So that's something that we think should be, should be looked into. Harold Brown gives his blessings.
So that, that's not kind of public safety, less to do with mobility or...
Well, it's, if you look at, let me, Stowe's, Sudbury's is a little more complicated. Stowe's is very quick into the point. Improving existing streets. In order to ensure vehicle and pedestrian safety, board will consider the adequacy of public ways adjacent to or providing access to a proposed development. Board's intent that a proposed subdivision not overly strain the capacity of existing or planned public ways so as to result in traffic congestion and safety problems. When deemed necessary by the board, a traffic study shall be performed, dah dah dah. When in the opinion of the board, a subdivision is deemed to have a detrimental effect on existing or proposed streets and intersections, or where a subdivision borders on an existing but inadequately constructed public street or way, the board may require appropriate and reasonable improvements in streets and ways bordering or providing access. So it's, you know, developments, large developments can have a substantial impact on the adjoining roadways, and they're never addressed until after they fact, and then it's the town's responsibility to clean up the messes, so it's, it's just another way for us to be able to get something for nothing.
It's been more common in the past for commercial developments, like, for example, Bose, when they took it from digital, it was an opportunity for Bose to be asked to improve the traffic conditions for their commuters to get from...
So they're put in the light.
They put in the light, and I think they also were somewhat incremental on the sidewalk as well. So they're really transferring their thinking to a residential development, because if you're bringing, putting in seventy houses or something like that, then that can have a significant impact on local roads. It's not just the residents, it's the UPS truck and the mail trucks, and the rail trucks and everybody else that services that, that development.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, for me, when I think about Century Mill, you know, the road, Century Mill and also Spectacle Road, especially, you know, those to me are old, old cart roads that are pretty bumpy, very narrow. I don't think they've ever been professionally graded and prepared. It's really been, you know, just kind of laying something on top, and I think, I think, you know, I know there was a traffic study, but, but that said there was no impact, but I think we all, well, I can see the impact that's, that's, that's happened during construction, but that's going to be coming when all the residents are there, that those roads are probably too narrow and not, not very safe.
And it's the commercial development on sixty-two. I mean, that's just sort of added to it, you know, getting more traffic through South Bolton Road because of that, so it's sort of...
Also people driving to Bose.
We do, yeah. Yeah, that's a new route for us to get to that development.
Yep.
For sure, and the, that Century Mill development, I always think, how do the people get from that development to South Band four ninety-five? And it's through the country lanes, so those intersections are very good around on that route.
And another thing that we recommend is having the town adopt a complete streets The town of Littleton, with the help of M A P C, just approved a policy this past year, and they got all sorts of awards for it. But I think that this would further our, and basically Complete Streets says that whenever a road, you know, when you do work to a road, that you are doing the work... that whenever a road, you know, when you do work to a road, that you are doing the work to accommodate not only motor vehicles, but also pedestrians, bicyclists, and mass transit. And-
Isn't, isn't, isn't the Department of Transportation, you know, if they were gonna take over, don't they have to take that into account? How everybody moves, not just cars, if you think about bicyclists and-
I think that's why we considered it might be easier to upgrade 117 if the state took over, because the state is committed to a complete streets policy, right?
Right, they have their, yes.
So, so if they take responsibility for it, they've actually signed up, so.
They have a green dive initiative, you go on their website, and, but I will say, go drive 111 through Boxborough and see the condition of that road. When we met with the planner there, to observe the little walkway that the town built connecting the school to the library, her comment was, the state would never put in a sidewalk here because of the wetlands. So even though the state has these policies, whether or not they're going to implement them in every case is questionable.
So that would, so this complete streets policy would be, what would it be, a bylaw? And it would require the town?
I don't know a lot about it, Jonathan.
I believe it might just be a policy.
Yes, complete streets policy.
I don't think it's a bylaw.
It's pretty involved, I do know that they say that-
So how is it adopted? I guess that's the question.
That's a good question, yeah, I don't know.
Everyone just agrees, like, where a selectman say this is a good idea, and?
The planning board voted to recommend in November, a selectman vote to introduce policy December, selectman vote to adopt policy, so in Littleton, it was just the selectmen adopting it. I just think it would give us further clout when the state does come in, to see that we-
If, if.
If, and, and I will say that if you look at West Acton, and again, it's that same stretch of 111, you'll notice that the state ends, state highway ends right as you get to the, this little village center of West Acton, and then that stretch is, the town maintains. So that's always a possibility, is that we can cordon off the National Historic District, and the state can have the other ones. But it's gonna be a hard fight because of the financial issue. Anything else that?
That sounds good.
Charles, what do you think?
So, yeah, so we'll discuss these, I mean, if anybody has questions now, but we'll be discussing these as part of, you know, looking at the development.
Actually, I thought of one thing that's in your report that I think maybe the town should maybe revisit, is the CPA.
I agree.
Preservation, I-
I agree, I, I, every workshop I go to, you know, CPA, oh yeah, we all have, we do wonderful things. I mean, you drive through these towns, and they have the signs, and this project was funded by CPA, and you want to rip your hair out.
Yeah.
So this town voted that down three times?
Twice.
Twice.
Twice, twice. It's gonna be a hard sell, it's gonna be a hard sell with the economic climate, because the town does have to pay into it. But according to the Sudbury planner, even though they were saying, well, the state's cutting back on how much the towns are getting, because you get tons of money, and they can be used for walkways, which are considered recreational.
So what is the matching?
I, I don't know.
What did it out?
You, you get more than what you put in, I know that.
It's a great appearance.
Not exactly, because the state's money comes from us too.
I'm sorry?
The state's money comes from us too.
Oh, yeah, wow.
But at least it then comes to us.
Right. But we're also funding all these other towns, right, the CPA, so you can look at it that way.
Yes, we would be paying into it, and now getting something out, where everybody else is paying into it and getting something out, yeah.
Great, well, great work, so are you working on a master plan?
No.
That's, that's what I really want to see, I know, I know we're working on this thing to map the trails, map conservation trails, and come up with a big GIS map-
Oh, yeah.
-of all the trails, but, you know, for me, that's what I, I want to see, a plan that shows all the paths, and then the proposed connections.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
That's how you're gonna sell it, this to people is, is like, okay, so we have a trail here, and we have a sidewalk here, and how are we gonna join them? And who's willing to provide an easement through their land to make that happen? So we have, because we have lots of great trails, but they're not, not all of them are loops. So I run to Sugar Road, and then I come back, but I'd love to run, keep going and go through Holden Farms, you know, that would have been great.
Yeah, well, actually, you can do Powder Hill and connect that here. We're doing the sidewalks, and we'll have to get together for some training with the town.
Yeah.
So, yeah, can we talk about that?
Yeah, sure, basically, we've started sort of this GIS initiative to map the trails and the sidewalks, and we're basically asking volunteers to use their smartphones to download Map My Hike application, and basically use that to map wherever they're walking, and then send it to the town, and we can sort of just slowly over time-
That's awesome.
-collect all these-
Can you, what would lay it on smart?
Well, in GIS, that's the idea, is that eventually this will be a layer in GIS that will be accessible to, right now, it's only accessible to town employees, but eventually it will be accessible to the public.
A whole GIS system, I've looked at it, and it's, it's really great, is that coming online?
Soon, right.
Would it include like intensity for the number of times? Like, so if one is, you know, say a main walkway, this walked all the time, so if they have 50 data points for trips down this path, and two down that path? Yeah, you'll be able to see the difference.
It'll be nice to.
But you'll be a thicker line, so-
Or in terms of the population?
Later, they'll do one where you can add pictures.
Eventually, well-
Pictures and emotions, like, this is a very happy place.
My, my point was, my point was, if you have a walkway where, you know, I don't know, 100 people walk down, and there's a loop that maybe one person goes down a month, would you see that, you know, the difference of?
No, no.
Like, so maybe it doesn't make sense to go to that loop, whereas maybe on the other side, there's one that 100 people go to.
I think you could use it as a survey tool, once it's all mapped out.
Yeah, that's great.
Where would you like to see connections?
So I'm like, an electron gene or someone, and I have an oscilloscope, I do persistence mode, I can see-
Well, you are the perfect person for that.
Yeah, it's all yours.
Well, I was just wondering, I bet you could do it, you know, some way.
No, there are-
Awesome, well thank you.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you for presenting. Thank you.
I'm walking part of Sunset Ridge.
If you can do, if you can do that, I'd be very impressed. Because we do want to part the-
Are there any trails up?
There are trails behind, but I would love to be able to like walk with my wife and son to the show of whining, and then walk down to the park.
For our next item, we have Alan Shrockit and Andrew Edison from Murphy Finance, Financial Investment, and Century Mill Estates. What are you doing? Derek, do you want to leave, um, on these?
Sure, I was hoping we could maybe lay out the phasing plan, just so everyone has something.
We have some little ones that you guys would like.
Do you prefer the little?
Okay, yeah, okay, we kind of thought that was gonna come up. There you go. So, so, yeah, if we could just start with, what have you, what phases have been or near completion, near are they?
Phase two.
Phase two is-
It's actually fairly built out, although not entirely, I think, and then maybe a little bit north, northern part of phase four.
When you say northern part?
Higher up on the gap.
Over here?
Yeah, I was thinking north was up, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, you're right, excellent.
And then the southern part, you're waiting for the wetland crossing to begin.
The road is in, let's see, in Spectacle. There, and then, to there. And we've started construction.
Water's down enough?
What's that?
Water level's down?
Um, no, we haven't gone across, we're not accessing it this way, we're actually-
Oh, that's right, I remember that now.
We're going over this lot, that way.
Okay, so phase two is completed, 100%?
It's not 100% complete, but, uh-
Are there any lots that have no construction on them?
Uh, there's a few, but we're about to start, we've pulled building permits on all of them, I think now, except for-
For 19 and 20.
18, 19, it's just a-
Basically, this may be a little bit outdated, but the lots highlighted in blue are lots that have been released by the planning board, so-
So these three, this 18A was just released, we just reviewed it today.
Right, yes, yeah.
So this is the last.
And 20 has our site trail on it, we'll be actually starting a house on that one also.
Do we, we voted on 19 and 20 last time?
Oh, right, we released them.
Right, they're just waiting for the, kind of covered in money, covered in-
So basically, out of inventory.
It's not a bad what place to be.
So basically, just a little summary of what's been going on in the last couple of weeks. We've been doing weekly construction meetings with Andy. It's been myself, Carol Gumbard, Fred Hamway, our current viewer, and Mike Carter, Andy's engineer, and a few weeks ago, we actually did a site visit through phase three, and we noted that some clearing had been done in the road right of way. So I basically told Mike, this is sort of how it came up about this authorization to move forward with the phases. I told Mike Carter that they needed to go before planning board to receive authorization to do that work, so, and then, in a follow-up conversation with Andy, Andy, I believe you had told us that the clearing had been done for testing that you were doing?
Correct.
You were testing for bedrock in the area?
Yeah, yes.
So, that was like two weeks ago, and then last week, Fred Hamway was out there doing a site inspection, and he walked through phase three, and he noted that much more clearing had been done in the area than what we had seen in the previous week, along with some impact to the wetland crossing, and some-
So the wetland crossing is here?
Right.
Yep.
Between 9 and 10, and 66 and 67?
Yes, yes.
I hear you.
Yes.
Yes.
So it's gonna be like a culvert there or something?
Okay, yeah.
Yes, yeah, box culvert, yeah, you know, blade holes, like a bridge.
Yeah, okay.
It's a wall, really not a bridge.
Okay.
And Fred Hamway also noted that lot 66 and 67 in phase three were also being cleared. So he notified, so 66-
Just north of the wetland, the easy road.
These two right here. So he contacted Carol, Carol went out, and she basically requested that the work be stopped, and then she issued an enforcement order for impact to the wetland. The other part of this is, Andy, I believe you're still waiting on approval from Natural Heritage for the endangered species habitat that's located on lot 65 and 66. So because they were doing work in lot 66, is that 66 there? Carol notified, notified Natural Heritage, and on Thursday of last week, we did a site visit with Natural Heritage to determine the extent of the clearing, if it had, you know, encroached into the, into the habitat.
So the habitat is the wetland there, the crossing.
Right.
Well, it's, it's, it's actually even bigger than that.
Okay.
It's bigger than that.
Yeah, it's bigger than the lot.
Right, so basically, at that point, we stopped all work in phase three, and so, and now they're here tonight to talk about starting that.
I've actually been to type of Natural Heritage today.
Okay.
And I'm expecting we're gonna have their letter in the next couple of days. We're gonna be ready to go, they, we were just finalizing some language on, on the restriction that's going, a little bit of the-
Just say we don't, I don't want to give the wrong impression, Natural Heritage approved the entire project.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, so these were approved?
Natural Heritage has approved the entire project, but their area of concern was in phase three. And in their approval that was issued a number of years ago, there was a couple fairly minor points still to like get details on, like they wanted the detail of the crossing culvert itself. So they approved that there's gonna be a culvert there, but they said, you know, when you have the final plans, we want to look at it. They had not authorized work to begin in phase three, but it's approved, but it's more like, we're not really waiting for their, for their approval, what we're waiting for them is to say, go ahead, go into that phase, so, and, and-
The class said, I'm approved.
Yes, I mean, and I met with, Mike Kira and I, the engineer for the development, we met with Natural Heritage two and a half weeks ago, maybe at this point, three weeks ago, and all of the remaining minor things that needed to get worked out were completed. And Natural Heritage said, we will be issuing your authorization to proceed as soon as I can get around to it. So that's where it was left with Natural Heritage, but they said, don't start till you have the wet habitat writing, so we jumped.
So we have the letter here from Natural Heritage.
That's basically a summary of that site visit from last week.
Again, so, they are, you know, one of the, one of the items they're concerned about was requiring a snow fence.
Yeah, which we have since, over in this area here, this lot, this lot here, used to be two lots originally.
66?
Yes, and we combined it into a one lot, and although it doesn't show on the phasing plan, it has a restriction line that runs sort of like this.
Actually, I do have that a few ones.
So it's a no build zone. So when Natural Heritage came out to see what we had done, we had cut trees on that lot, but, but there were, but not in their area. And so in his letter, he said, I just want to confirm, have it confirmed with the engineer who put, because the snow fence is a line just set by an engineer, by Dujon, that it was in the right place.
This is that lot.
And he has-
It's not designated by the engineers with a line.
So there's a no construction, no cut?
Correct, yeah.
So no fence is-
So we have a, don't write on, um, just whatever, point's that. Do you remember, there was, when they came out, we had a snow fence right here, and he said, well, how do I know it's in the right place? And I said, well, it was staked by an engineer, and we put it there, and he said, well, have the engineer write me a letter that says that, which we did.
We were having a hard time locating these, if it was parked in the field.
I got a little confused, so actually, there's a lot of snow fences- So actually, the last piece, a lot of snow fences up and out. The last piece of the puzzle for us with Natural Heritage is they're looking for us to, they're, this, like, this section of this lot is going to have a restriction on it. Uh, I actually spoke with him today. We went over the language on it. He's revising it. I'm going to have it tomorrow morning and then we'll have, um, an approval from him, signed by the owner, which we'll get on record. What we're going to be doing, remember I had given you a new plan, everybody? This is the new new plan. Okay? Because the old, the previous plan and the, the, um, lot layout plan from two thousand and eleven doesn't have the specifics for this, this particular item of Natural Heritage. Right, so those are now included and this is field, okay? So I just wondered, that's the, that's the one that's going to be recorded and then we're going to do the open space deeds off of.
Okay.
Okay, because, because, uh, Judy Pickett wanted everything in one... This has everything.
This has the restrictions.
This is everything.
Okay.
Okay?
I would ask, we're guaranteeing it'll be the last plan.
Well, never know, I don't know. I thought the last one was going to be the last one, but that's okay. So, but what happened was when we did the open space deeds way back when, uh, Judy was concerned because it referred to a bunch of different plans and different, there are different locations at the registry of deeds and she wanted everything in one place for one reference and that's what's going to be recorded. So now, I'll get that to Carol the next time I see her, okay?
So, just to go back, so has, has Brandon Duchamp or Duchamp Mendellis, have they verified the snow fence, its location?
It sounds like you sent a letter to Natural Heritage stating that, but I haven't seen a copy of it.
I can show it to you if you want to.
Yeah, just, you know, give a little better. Yeah. Can I ask you a general question while we're speaking about? So, when somebody buys these lots, do they have right to clear trees and, like...
No, no.
On any, well, I'm saying not in that section, but if somebody bought another section, once they bought it, is their land, they don't, there's no like subdivision type rule, but for this particular lot, the owner will have to know that they can't touch that.
Oh, yeah, this is going to be a recorded restriction at the registry of deeds.
So when the person buys that, they'll know?
Right, so for instance, that two-acre parcel, lot sixty-six A, of that two, two-point-three acre parcel, essentially one acre is no touch.
Yeah, okay, so they'll, they'll be aware of that.
Absolutely, oh, yeah. It'll be on record.
And who's putting up those tags?
This is, uh, my email, uh, emailed me. Well, this was the day of the meeting, June twentieth. That's when, I believe you were out there.
But it's the nineteenth, we were out there.
Oh, okay, so this is the day. And this was the letter that I forwarded to, uh, Brent. Oh, actually, they sent it to Brent too, but when I bought it, I resented it.
Brent's the guy?
So this certifying that the orange fence represents the line, Natural Heritage. So if you did not cut, were we just...
It's good to see the dot.
And then also just... So also getting back to lot sixty-six, I just want to make the point that originally, um, I believe it was Andy's intention to do staging on lots, um, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy, but then that changed and that was part of the reason why you were doing clearing on sixty-six and sixty-seven.
Right.
So, and that was just a, it's a communication. We didn't, you know, when we were out there, we didn't realize that the staging area had moved. Because if you look in the plan, it, it shows it in a different area, so...
Which one?
Uh, just that the phasing plan, that's part of the...
So which one is where it's the staging area?
This patch area is where it's... You're saying it moves down a little bit?
So basically, Andy, can you just verify which lots you're using for staging for phase three?
I think we're, yes, I can.
I mean, based on the clearing out there and based on the letter from Natural Heritage, it was sixty-six and sixty-seven.
I think it's, uh, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight. It's, it's four, these four lots.
So did not Natural Heritage weigh in on that?
Well, as long as they're staying out of the endangered species habitat area, beyond that snow fence, it should be fine.
And then what, what's...
I'm sorry.
What's going on in phase one, like, starting there, this lot?
Uh, this phase one, um, you know, Century Mill, like this look, look here, is probably forty feet high, uh, lower than that.
Yeah, so what's going to happen there?
Okay, well, the way the plans, do you have a set of the subdivision plans?
I do, yeah, we can look at it.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, no, it's, I'm interested to know how you're getting up there or what you're thinking.
It's completely going to be cut.
At the time we got the approvals, in order to not have to ask, "Great, we've reserved it." It shows a V being cut in and the land being laid back and a huge amount of clearing.
Was there retaining walls as part of that or was that just a discussion?
No, because, because, um, it, it is, um, the town regulations are three-to-one slope. So this shows a three-to-one slope. However, uh, we would prefer, um, you know, we, we're trying throughout the development not to cut trees down and, uh, and have it be more mature-looking. So, uh, we'd like to have an alternative to doing this. And so what we did was we cleared, uh, this shows like about a three-hundred-foot swath. We cleared about sixty feet along the road. Um, because if it's ledge, uh, which it very well could be, um, but we need to bore, do borings and test. If it's ledge, then we can do straight faces and we would not have to do this kind of clearing.
It looks like it's a glacial deposit to me, so I think it looks like an ester. We call it an ester, this kind of snake hill formations, but we'll see.
Well, this is all, this is all ledge you can see.
It is.
Yeah, oh, yeah, all this is all ledge here and we've done, you know, digging and it's very ledgey, so, um, but in order to find out, uh, so we picked them up with a...
So when you said you're clearing, you're clearing on top of it?
Oh, you haven't really done that.
So where is the first house lot?
Um, there's a house lot here and there's one here.
Uh, so there're going to be houses perched way up on that?
Mm-hmm. These houses don't really, um, they're not, um, planned to be accessed from the road. There was a common driveway that was going to come down this way. Because this name is actually much more gentle to come down this way. Uh, so that's how it was, uh, you know, during planning stages and discussions. I think the plan's...
We haven't seen that on any maps, right?
Um, they may be on the subdivision drawings, I would have to check, but...
It rings loud bells for me.
More near plan. Yeah, so, anyway, um, we've contacted main drilling and blasting and, um, they have a drill rig, they've brought a drill rig out to the site, but in order for them to do their, their patterns that they want to do, you have to, there can't be trees and there can't be stumps and they want the topsoil removed, so we...
And just, just to interject a little bit here, um, Fred Hamway is in disagreement with you on the amount of clearing and, and, um, you know, removing the topsoil. Uh, he didn't seem to think that was required to do that level of testing.
I think, I, my understanding of what Fred said is different. My, my understanding is that, what he was saying is that the level of clearing that we're doing doesn't fall under the definition of testing. Not that you don't, which is different than saying you don't have to cut trees down and pull stumps in order to do the testing. I, do you follow what I'm saying?
No.
He's, I think Fred was trying to make the differentiation, saying that the work we're doing goes beyond testing.
Right.
Okay?
I agree with that.
Okay. But, so that he want, he was saying, he was agreeing with you, come in to see the board. Come in to see the board. Come in to see the board.
Right, right.
I don't think he was saying that in order to do, um, the testing we'd want to have done, that you don't need to do this work.
I disagree with you, but we may have, you know, heard it differently, so...
On any event, main drilling and blasting is actually doing the work. Um, you know, we need, basically, we're trying to find out, um, if we're going to have to do this, this much, uh...
Because if there's no ledge, if there's no ledge to create walls, you'll have to do that.
Correct.
Otherwise, there'd be erosion and...
Yeah, I mean, if, if this was dirt, you'd create slopes and then grass them.
Yeah.
If it's not dirt and it's ledge, then you can do a street. You can go to a one-on-one, straight down.
Because the ledge is going to act as a natural barrier.
So, what did you say, it was thirty feet, forty feet?
This is probably a forty-foot cut right in here.
Purgatory chasm.
So you want it to be straight down.
It's kind of a rare position, but you guys are actually hoping you're getting some ledge.
Exactly, that's exactly correct.
You might have lucky.
Um, it's, I mean, this is all ledge you can see in three...
Where's the old-school car path going this way?
It's over here.
Oh, it's same, same angle, but further back, okay.
I mean, we would have, we would have brought the road this way and not had to have done this cut.
Yeah.
The problem is though that Century Mill Road goes like this, so you don't have the... We would have needed a line of sight waiver.
Okay, okay. Because it would have been merging or something?
No, because when a road's like this, right, you can't, and you're here, you can't see far enough.
You've got a nice ninety here, you don't there.
Right, so, in any event, uh, yes, believe it or not, we are try, we are sort of hoping that there is ledge.
So your plans call for a road to be here, the road's got to be here.
Yeah, the road will be there.
But it's a matter of, are we doing a huge V?
Exactly. Or...
Much to make the ink out.
I'm trying to ascertain, you know, what it is that's there so that I can then come back and say...
So where's main at this point? They've done their stuff in the...
No, um, no, because we stopped.
Okay.
They, uh, did a couple days' worth in some areas that we had.
Yeah, so they've started the pattern, but they're not done. They need to keep on taking down trees or they need to continue?
Well, the trees have been, we, we've cut trees around sixty feet.
Okay.
In width, all the way from here to, um, just before the crossing.
Okay.
About two-hundred feet from the crossing. And, um, we pulled the stumps because they, they can't get their tracks around on stumps. And we've stripped the loam, but it's only in piles.
Okay.
So, um...
I have a couple of pictures too for the site visit.
She does more or less the whole map.
So, so we need to get the piles onto our staging areas on the lots and clean up the road so they can see what the heck they're working on.
This is more related to phase three, though, this isn't phase one. This is the wetland crossing, this is, Andy had, um, basically put up the corridor controls per the enforcement order, so that was good. Um, this here is the road, no, I'm sorry, this here is the road right of way, the clearing that had been done in phase three.
So this is recent?
This is recent, this is from our Thursday meeting.
That's, that picture's right there?
Yes, and then this one, this one here is like further up in here.
And what's this?
And then this here, where the lots over here.
Thanks.
So they're all from, they're all from the border of stage one three?
That's the staging area.
Yeah, I mean, we, we started, um, we start, we've cut the trees on the four lots that we're going to be using as staging areas and, um...
So this is, where's the...
That's the wetland crossing, right? It's upstream of it, but...
One of the lots will be used to stockpile loam. When you stockpile loam, um, you cut the trees, you pull the stumps, but you don't have to strip the loam off the lot because you're putting more loam on the lot. Um, when you're, then we need another, uh, lot just for rocks. Um, our area of boulders is very rocky, um, big boulders. Sometimes you think it's ledge, but they're really big boulders about the size of cars. Um, so, in addition, which, so, and when you are stripping the topsoil, that's, you're popping up these big rocks. So, um, we need to take the rocks, we, on our second lot that we're using for staging, that lot needs to be, have the loam removed and the loam coming off of that lot goes on the loam line. And the rocks go on a clean lot because eventually you'll probably crush them and you can't have loam mixed in with rock because then it's not a usable product. I don't, you sound like you have some background.
Just following you a little bit.
Okay. Well, rock is a, a material that you can use for structural fill after it's crushed.
Yeah.
But if it has organics in it, it's no good.
It's mixed and it's no good.
It's, it's like junk, so...
It's the stuff they spread over at the solar place?
Yes, the junk, that's right, the junk.
It's robbed, mixed with organics.
Right, so, that's no good for, it's okay for just general fill, but at the expense of moving rock, hammering it to a size that you can crush it and so forth, that's an expensive process. It's handled a lot and you need crushers and it's, it's, it takes a lot of time to get into a structural fill, like where you could use it to build a road.
Yeah.
Uh, so you want to keep it clean. So, we have one lot that's going to be for loam, a separate lot that gets stripped of all loam, stripped of all subsoil, low roots. You get down to like clean, I don't know what stratosphere it's called, but clean and then you put your rocks on it. That way there, when you break them and crush them and so forth, it's not mixing with organic material. That's the reason for the second, um, staging area. Um, the third staging area typically we have is for brush.
Okay, so what are the items we need to act on, um...
So, we, um, need to have, although I'm not really sure, I, um, I've looked through all our approvals. I don't see any place, but may, I may have missed it.
Yeah, I do have a, I think it's like a letter or a memo that stated before construction had even began where one of the requirements or the conditions, it wasn't in the permit, but it was sort of a protocol that was going to be set up where, um, you would come before the planning board, uh, before you moved into a, a next phase.
Okay.
You would have a new construction.
I, because I mean, I, I'm not, we're already here and so forth, but I did, I've looked through my Fosford special permit.
Which is fine. So basically, answer questions and give an arrow as to what's going on, which is fine.
Exactly, just, we need to better understand what's going on out at the site.
So, um, we're on the agenda to get the planning boards, um...
But the first item is to, to move forward with phases, uh, three and one?
One and three. We're not actually going to begin what I consider to be construction on phase one, although Fred would sort of say it's beyond testing.
So, so...
By phase three, we are going to build.
Okay, so, so you're going to start, you're already working in phase four?
Pha- phase four, yes.
Oh, yeah. You're already working in there and what's going on? You're building roads or houses?
Um, well, there's different sections of phase four.
Well, just the one with the wetland crossing, so alls are getting access this way.
We've already built this road and the road is already paved up to here.
Mm-hmm.
So this is paved and this is also phase four over here, this is paved and these houses are all built.
Yeah. Um... So just in terms of this part of the phase where you cross the wetlands, you're waiting?
Where, this road is under construction right now.
Okay.
Coming from the back.
This is going to get started, so the...
Our road is a condition requires to wait until July one.
Right. So you're doing all that work through there?
Correct.
Okay, so you're building the road there, any houses?
Can't build houses until we get to, uh, till we reach a standard of having emergency access vehicles that can get in.
So pretty much as soon as the wetland crossing is in?
We would have emergency access.
We'll do whatever else you need to do on the road and then start pulling permits?
Correct. Yes, that would be the general...
So, uh, we were looking at the picture of phase four then?
Well, that's actually, no, that was just done in phase three.
Do you have a question? I would be even fond of that we've been doing for the release of the building permits. Um, is that, I think that was just figured out for phase two, right?
It was actually figured out.
Or was that the entire thing?
It was figured out for all of the lots that were initially paved in phase two and the section of phase four.
Okay, so we need probably another estimate on phase four for remaining work and then...
When we, when we get to that point, yes.
You know, this much, this many lots equals X per... You know, this much, this many lots equals X per pop, and we're gonna.
We're not at the point of, you know, doing the long estimate, because we're just starting the work. When we're about eighty-five, ninety percent.
Few months down the road, right?
Yeah.
I just asked a question, I mean, just, why is this phase four not part of phase two?
Which way?
Well, thirty-five, six.
The phasing.
So, it's based on number of houses?
No. The phasing in this development, each time you see a phasing line, it's the, it's, the road is crowning. You're reaching a high point in the road, which, the significance of that is that the water is draining one direction, and it's draining in a different direction.
Okay.
So, that means, when you start a phase, you have to build the drainage to accommodate.
Okay, so it's based on drainage.
It's based on drainage.
So, at this point, between two and four, it starts going down, is what you're saying?
Yes. It's the high points in the road.
Okay. You looking for a motion on the first point, Jonathan?
What are, what are the other, so just in terms of Fred, Fred's just, what was it? Just the thing you're disputing was whether.
I think we were disputing basically what our definition of.
Testing was.
Well, what construction is. Because we, while we were in the field, we were, well, Carol, Fred, and I were in agreement that when you're doing clearing, grubbing, removing topsoil, that's all considered part of construction, and I think you were saying that you considered it part of testing.
In this instance, the reason why we don't, we were doing it is because.
So, basically, what you're seeing in those pictures, that's kind of the level of.
So, this was one of your Friday or Thursday weekly meetings?
This was Thursday, this is one of our weekly meetings.
So, you know, I'd just like to say it's important, important that, you know, these meetings are collegial, and everybody's working on, you know, coming to a consensus. You know, I think that's really a good relationship, and, you know.
I think I would just like to make the point, too, that, given the fact that all the phases of the development are now, could potentially be under construction, I think it's really important to make sure that stormwater controls are in place, what you're doing with the perimeter patrols, the silt fence, the straw bales, sediment basins, and Fred will continue to, to inspect those, but I think it'll be more so important now, with all of those phases under construction, because that has more impact to the environment, habitat, surface waters, wetlands. So, I just want the board to be mindful of that.
Yeah, I mean, so, the concern I have is, you know, so you're basically pushing into every area of the site with your work, and, so, you know, so you're asking, you know, right now, you're, you know, finished up in two, you're, you're moving into four, you're asking to move into three and one, and so I just, you know, I guess, you know, in working on this project, you know, it's, it seems good to have things, it seems good to have some, you know, to keep things working well, to have, you know, some things held back, so that, you know, the meetings continue to go well weekly, and everybody's respectful, and everything's getting done, so.
And that there's a strong level of communication of what is being done, because we were pretty surprised when we went out there and we saw work being done in phase three, which, you know, we were pretty surprised by that. But, you know, I kind of would like to ask the question, too, are there areas in the development where you don't anticipate doing work at this point? Like, are there parts of phase three and phase one that you don't need to do clearing in, or?
This, this is.
To just sort of minimize impact?
Well, minimizing impact, the developments approved to be built.
Right, no, and I understand that, but.
But, and this area here is a huge cut of material, so, and there are other places that we need material to fill, so.
So, just in terms of your earthworks?
So, as far as impact to the environment and so forth, if I don't take the material from here, I'm gonna have to truck it from miles away.
No, I understand that, that's, doesn't make sense.
The impact to the environment is less to, you know, use your materials and over dirt, and, and use it on-site, and balance your site, so that, you know, whether, and so forth. So, that's mainly the reason why we're looking into this area now. We're really not planning on building the road quite yet.
Phase one.
In phase one.
Yeah.
We're out of lots here, and so, yes, we would like to build this phase, and we're gonna be building this phase, but, but we may be, we're certainly gonna be doing testing here, and we, we may do blasting there.
Yes, so.
To generate, because it has to come out, and the, it's, it's the intelligent way to do it, I mean, it doesn't make sense not to do it.
Yeah, no, I think we understand that, I think, you know, the, the concern is, is that the whole, you know, every phase is clear-cut.
But we don't clear-cut.
Okay. A lot of trees are cut, stumps are pulled out, and it's prepared, it's prepared for construction, but then, you know, the wa, you know, the water quality, you know, protections are in place, and, and then, nothing's happening in those sites, you know, and we're going through, we're going through the fall, the winter, so there's, there's a concern about all of this area, and erosion, and silt filling in different places, so, you know, that's, you know, that's the concern about opening up the whole project all at once, rather than kind of working your way through it. I think that's, you know, one of the concerns.
Carol, can you tell me what phase my property is next to?
Sure, now, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah.
Ken Elrudi.
Okay, so Ken Elrudi actually told us that his property, I believe, and you're welcome to come up and look at the plan, I believe your property, his property is down here, so it's above his phase four. I believe you're down here, because the wetland crossing here.
So, you're, you're in a butter.
You're off spectacle?
I'm on spectacle, right. So, we're, so this is my property, probably here, I have over a thousand feet of button his property.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, someone, another Indian, obviously, but they put hay bales and silt fence on my property by mistake. I asked Andy to re-stake my property line, because, to identify it, which he did, and had Ducharme and Dillis come out and stake it. So, problem is, the law went out there, and we had a massive amount of tree removal from my property. So, that's a pretty big issue, and we said, we'll talk about it, I mean, I haven't seen them, so. The hay bales that went in vary from about four to eight feet.
Right.
Meandering on my property, onto his property, so, that's, I, I wouldn't consider it massive, but you can describe.
Yeah, I mean, there's twelve trees that are twenty inches plus that were cut down, and that's massive, and in Massachusetts, it's a major problem.
Yeah.
I know he didn't cut the trees, but unfortunately, he's responsible for that.
Yeah, and I'm taking, I'll take full responsibility.
So, we, we haven't discussed the ramifications of where we're heading with this, unfortunately, it's, again, it just happened today, and it was a wait in the day, so, I think what, I just wanted to basically get it on record that, you know, multiple times my property's been broached, and once with the hay bale situation, staked incorrectly. They haven't removed them yet, because I had asked them not to, and to re-stake the property. So, now the property is staked, but then we went up to verify the stake was done, and the trees were gone.
So, after the, after Ducharme and Dillis.
Yeah.
Surveyed the line.
Yeah, I mean, you can scan this, the pictures of the trees and the sizes of the removal.
So, these were oak pines?
No, they're oak, oak trees. I mean, it's, again, Andy and I haven't talked about this, so, there may be a solution, and there may not be, but I want to get it on record that, you know, there was an issue on that back property line, and my biggest concern is I don't want anything stumped, even close to the line at this point, to, to a conclusion of where we're at. And this, this, this plane here, this, I know you actually have this, I can't really, actually, let's give you distances, this is the hay bale issue, you can see that, it came over eight feet, and in this eight-feet area, there's probably six trees that have been removed in here, and, so, once we move the hay bales, well, obviously, now, the problem is that it's pretty clear-cut, and now I'm seeing, you know, my property.
So, this is your lot?
Yeah, this is the lot line here.
The lot line is, is a black line?
Yeah, and then the orange is the hay bales.
The hay bale line is the orange hay bale line.
Yeah.
So, you know, and, and.
What's this line down the middle?
That's just another piece of my property, I got multiple pieces.
So, this is all wooded, this is all, this whole area?
Yeah, this is open, this was all wooded.
This used to be wooded over in here, but about three years ago, five years ago, he cleared out it. So, this has all been cleared, he cleared it all.
So, not this, this, this was a tree line to protect the property.
Right.
So, we had a difference, and then, like I said, you know, the hay bale drifted over, and unfortunately, the people cutting the trees followed the hay bales.
Right.
And, you know, it's.
So, you're building houses here?
No, he's on my land.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm talking about.
No, no, that's just my land. He, I have a house on the spectacle hill.
Oh, okay.
Originally, I think he had anticipated building a home up here.
Right.
And so, he basically cut all the trees down in this area.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, and you can't get access?
So, no, it was a double wetland crossing, and it just wasn't gonna happen.
So, this is, there's no house here?
No, this is, this land.
You want to be woods.
I mean, you can see the woods is still on the line on the other side, that's pretty good. So, nobody lives here?
No.
I live there, but it's just.
Oh, you do?
My house is here, and that's my property.
His houses, so he can't.
You know, in situ.
I can see your houses up there.
In situations like this.
I can see your trucks moving.
You know, what, what you're measuring is the calipers you've lost, and then you're asked, you would be asking for Andy to match that in terms of new trees, so if he's planting, if, you know, if he's planting two-and-a-half, three-inch caliper, that the total caliper he's adding is going to come up to, you know, what you lost.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna go that way.
What do you mean, caliper?
Trying to get all the width of the trees.
Yeah, so, for those of you.
Twenty-two-inch oak.
One two-inch tree is ten, ten two-inch trees is one two-inch tree.
I don't know how you put a value on a hundred-and-fifty-foot oak tree, you can't, there's a big difference. I mean, I understand the little trees, but, you know, that's thirty years, I'll be dead before they ever grow.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
So, that's a legal issue, that's not your issue. My issue is, I'm requesting that the stumps are not removed from my property line, I've already, obviously, talked to.
So, you want those to stay?
Yeah, to, to remove. It's all the legal issue of where we're at.
That makes sense. When you're going along the, should there be some type of buffer, or you?
Well, there should, I'm not sure Massachusetts law is, I don't believe you can click up to a property line anyway.
Shouldn't there be like a, is there a buffer or something, like, next to somebody's water?
I don't think there is.
I don't think there is.
Certain, certain neighborhoods have it.
I mean, that's not the issue.
Yeah, the issue is that.
Well, I'm just saying, should it be like that close?
You know, if we had a buffer, then it wouldn't even go up to the property.
But I don't think we do have a buffer, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think so, no.
There are rules about number of trees per acre should be cut down, but that's a totally different issue.
Well, these trees on my land, the plan calls for them to be cut down, because there's a drainage swell that runs right here. Unfortunately, I'm sure that the staking was probably done right, but when the hay bale people come in and put the hay bales in, you know, they, if there's a stump, if there's a tree right here, you know, they go around it, so, they probably didn't know that it was right on the line. So, so then, so, we cut trees on this side of the, you know, on this side of the hay bale line.
So, with the, the correct line that was surveyed, have you put up construction fence along that line, or is there anything that now?
He has, nothing defined, well, I just had it re-staked, so every, every probably fifty to a hundred foot, there's now a property line staked.
Okay.
But the hay bales are still currently on my property, because obviously, Andy, we haven't moved them yet.
Right, right.
It's requested.
It's, well, it wasn't, it was requested to be removed upon the staking of the property line.
So, what do we do then?
So, well, we didn't know the trees were gonna be cut, so, and I don't, I think the surveyor was as surprised when we went out there today to walk the line, that the trees were gone, well, the trees were cut probably, I have no idea, a month and a half, two months ago.
I mean, I would recommend that construction fencing be put up along that staked line, then, just so that your subcontractors know not to pull those stumps. I don't know if that's in your schedule, but.
If the hay bale line, once we move the hay bales.
Well, I guess my question is, are you gonna be doing work in this area before those hay bale lines get moved? Because I'm just, I would be worried now that someone goes and removes the stumps before, so it'd be nice to just maybe even.
Were you up there tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the stump's still there?
Yeah, yeah, some were pulled.
I'm surprised it's still there.
Yeah, some were pulled, and, and some were not.
Because we.
So, that's why, I mean, I've taken it.
That's the next step after cutting trees.
And so, that's why I'm requesting that the stumps aren't removed, and if, you know, I don't have an issue with the hay bales being put in place on Andy's property and removing them from mine, that actually defined better where the stumps were.
Right.
So, I mean.
Yeah, that's what you just suggested.
Yeah, so, I mean, he needs to move them one way or the other, to get them back on his property, he's gotta get them off my property. The, the bigger issue, again, is, you know, the damages that have been caused, what, what we're gonna do with that. So, I mean, Andy, I don't, I don't have a problem with them now being removed, but I don't want the stumps removed, and I want it, I was gonna say for a twenty-foot buffer for now, until things are settled.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And, taking responsibility.
I understand that.
You cleared, cleared out this entire thing.
Not entirely, there's a, the high trees are still there.
Well, ninety, ninety percent of it was cleared. Why, why is, like.
Trees on my property matter?
No, 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 but I'm saying, you cut all the trees down on your property yourself.
No, I didn't, I mean, you can see with the pictures, I mean, you can walk up, people could go there tomorrow.
Oh, that's a, that's a real question.
There's a tree line, those are trees on my property, that there were now six-feet of trees are gone.
I just, you know, it's better not to ask questions like that when you're, you know, you've done something wrong.
Yeah, I mean, it's, right.
You know, I just, Andy, you should be instructing your people to err on this side, so if there's a tree, there, there's a tree in the way, your bales.
There's nothing left now, it's.
No, I know, any other lines, your, your bales need to be on your side.
Well, the bales have to be in the right place, always.
Right.
Yeah, obviously, that compounded the problem.
So, how are you laying out the hay bales? Is it by survey, or are you just pulling off of?
Well, the surveyor's stake the line where the hay bales go, and then, the hay bale company installs them, but.
Are there other areas on the, on the site where you're abiding other people's property, where project controls may not necessarily be needed?
So.
Because I would just be concerned that this happens in other locations, so, depending on how the planning board feels about it, I would recommend that construction fencing get placed in other areas where there are abiding properties, where the potential for this to happen again could occur, especially if there's no erosion in the road.
So, so we'd be asking, we'd be asking your agent here to come up with a plan that shows where, where you're abiding other homeowners?
Well, you can see, most that doesn't have homeowners, that's not.
I mean, open space, it's supposed to be, because you have that, you have that marked anyway.
There isn't much of it.
There isn't much.
So maybe here, but this has already been done.
This has a, uh, a no cut.
Okay.
So.
So are there really not any other areas?
Actually, there's a little bit, yeah, this has an issue with the property.
How about just on this side, and this side, coming in off a century mill?
Isn't this open space over there?
No. And there are houses there, and there are more houses in here. So, I, I mean, I, I think, uh, you know, I think requiring a plan, you know, from your surveyor that shows where you're abutting homeowners like this gentleman, and where you need fencing put in, that's.
We can, if you want, I mean, we can put in snow fencing.
I think that would be really helpful.
On our border, our property.
That would, you're thinking it's just in phase one, so there's no other ones down here, that's.
I mean, you could also just fill any, either the morgue, cause at this point, I don't think you have construction fencing along the liminal front line, right? You're just, it's basically where you're required to have self-fencing.
Um, well, like on a lot that doesn't have any order of conditions.
You don't have anything, right?
Yeah, there's no, there's no limit of clearing or anything.
Right.
The hay bales on my land weren't even supposed to be there, they weren't even required, not by conservation anyway. I don't know if you guys require them, but.
It's probably on the.
One of the things. No, just a hardcore kind of thing that they build, um.
Well, we'll be looking to hear that you've, you know, you've resolved, resolved it, you know, to satisfaction. You know, it is an invasion.
Trust me.
It is, it doesn't, it doesn't feel good.
Nope.
Come home to that.
So can we get a buffer between my property line and his line, though? I'd like at least a little gap, so he's not sitting on my line, is that possible?
In terms of going forward in construction, in terms of the houses, or?
No, he's, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, now, temporarily, he's gonna move these hay bales. Here's my line, I'd prefer to have those hay bales four or five feet away from my property line, just so we don't have any more encroachment. Yeah, but at least he has a buffer, that he's not gonna be digging or whatever. I know he's putting a, a drainage area there, that, you know, obviously, you know, we can't have draining into my property either. So we got, you know, different issues coming up in the future that I hope's done right, and we won't have any issues. But when I'm encroached on twice, then now I get concerns. And I know Andy's not out there watching these guys do this stuff, I mean, he's got a big project, I understand that, but it's still.
Is there anything in the subdivision where they have to create a buffer from the property line to abutters, or should there be? I don't know.
I don't believe so.
I, I think if we just move the hay bales to the, uh, location, at the hay bale location, uh, certified by the engineer that they're in the right spot, it solves the problem, it won't happen again.
Yeah, and then out there with the other piece of it, with the, the tree damage, that's not you guys.
Yeah, so, um, so we can do what you did. You can have, uh, Ducharme and Dallas send a letter to this gentleman and to the town planner that it's been, you know, recertifying the line and that the hay bales are in the, you know, exact location.
And then again, I don't want any stumping done on Andy's property line.
And Andy.
That's the biggest thing, because obviously, we have, there's a legal issue involved here, and I don't want.
If we, if we.
Andy's given a verbal commitment.
Well, if we, if we move the hay bales, we won't be on, there won't be any issue, because whatever stumps are on your property, they'll be on your property.
You said, it sounded like you were unsure what's even going on down that stumping wise, so.
No, I'm not unsure at all.
Well, you said, well, you're surprised that they didn't pull the stumps.
Um, I, I, the, the stumps are in.
Right.
The stumps in that area, now, were pulled.
I'm just saying, just make sure that it's adjusted.
I took pictures of the stumps.
Just make sure it's adjusted before, you know, you said you were unsure, you're surprised they weren't pulled, it was just going off your wits.
No, I mean, the, the, because the, I, I saw them pulling the stumps there, so I'm surprised when he says there are stumps still there.
Why would you let him do that if you knew they were already on my land?
No, no, this was like a month and a half ago, when the trees went back down.
Well, May twenty-first, the trees weren't cut, I sent you an email that day that we had an issue. We had, I had Ducharme go out, I said, do me a favor, do a quick shoot. He shot it, said, yep, you're right, you're hitting, it's on your property. And I notified you, and you responded a couple of weeks later, and the email's right here, when, uh. I mean, it's, you're not gonna, we don't wanna get in a pissing fight, that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, no.
It happened, it's, now we gotta solve it.
When Brandon contacted me initially, um, about it, what Brandon said to me is, uh, that, that you contacted him, cause we share the same surveyor.
Right, and no trees were removed, though, at that time, because me and my wife had just walked it.
Okay, well, by the time I spoke to Brandon.
They were gone? Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know that, and then it couldn't, then I have no idea, so I never went back out there and could get him to do it.
He said, what he said to me was, that he didn't think it was a, a big deal with you, and.
But prior to the trees being removed, it wasn't, cause, you know, we could move the hay bale and everything would've been fine, cause nothing was damaged at that time. Now you, now the trees are gone and that's damaging.
So, you know, again, it's communication and, uh, you know, getting back to people so quickly.
Would it be possible, because we have our construction meeting tomorrow morning at ten AM, would it be possible to get either a construction fence, a snow fence, or move those erosion controls? But by the time we have that meeting, so that way Carol can go.
A thousand feet.
Oh, that.
No, that's huge, it's a lot of work there.
That's a lot of work, okay.
So you're, you're gonna look at that tomorrow?
I'm actually, I'm not going to that meeting, but Carol and, and Fred will be there, I could always have Fred take a look at it, but.
But I'm just asking, my, my request is simple, I don't want any digging near or on my property.
And I think your solution works there, let's get it surveyed, let's put the fence where it needs to go.
Before any digging's done.
On all sides, respect the property line, and that's, that is the line, there's no buffer on one side, there's no buffer on the other side, that's just, that's the line.
Yeah, the line's done, cause Andy had the guy go up and do the line.
Excellent.
And Ducharme re-staked it.
Any other, and then you'll do that in any other locations where you're abutting, uh.
Anybody's?
Yeah, in terms of new construction, you can, you know, so phase one, we talked about, um, I don't know.
I can't, it's a lot, it's no fence, well, not that big a deal.
So, you know, you can, you can work that out, um, but, you know, what, what do you think, Erica?
I would recommend it, just, just because you do have quite a few subcontractors out there, and, you know, sometimes things get lost in detail, where I'm assuming this probably was the case, um, so.
I, it's just, I'm happy to do it, we'll put the snow fences along from the property. But we have abutters.
Only we're, you know, not conserv, I mean, I know.
If you have open space, you don't need.
Right, cause you already have your markers up and.
Well, open space isn't an abut.
No, yeah, we, I mean, we don't want you, I know conservation doesn't want you going there, but they have their own markers.
Right.
So, so where I have, uh.
Individuals like this gentleman.
Okay.
You just don't want more people coming in here like this.
It's a good idea.
Thank you for coming in, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Let us know, let us know how it goes. So, one of the easy things that we can approve tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the revised road profile, Fred Hamway wrote a letter, the road C old stone circle, here's that. Yeah, that's it.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's lowering here at the bridge, or it's the whole thing?
I have the plan, I don't know.
It's not, it's not, it's not lowering the bridge in this area. When we were, uh.
Exploded.
When we were, when we were, when we were roughing in the road, uh, and, and it's a fill, uh, filling the road, bringing it up, we, we got to the point where the road was at the same height as the, the lots around it. But the stakes said keep filling five more feet, so I said, well, that doesn't make sense, because if you raise the road higher than the abutting lots, that means when you go and build a house, you have to cut the trees down in order to fill on the lot to access it from the road. So I stopped the construction and called my engineer, and actually, Fred was there, I said, Fred, this doesn't look right to me, I think we can do this in a better way, and he agreed right away, so I called my engineer, and my engineer revised the plan.
So, and you raised a topography of a bunch of lots for no good purpose. You got to a point.
I could see it, I could see it.
Believe it that way.
We're at a good height for the road, and so they questioned to my engineer, and I, Fred was there, and I was sort of like, I said, Fred, well, this doesn't, why do I, why do I have to bring the road up another five feet? He says, I don't think you do, so it was kind of obvious, but.
It's probably an engineering mistake somewhere back when.
Ah, I'm not sure, I would call it a mistake, but so this is an improvement, and, uh, you know, we'll be able to leave a lot more trees, and, uh, it's just a better.
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a nicer way to do it.
So Fred Hamway, our engineer, has recommended that we approve the revised road C profile design.
I'll make the motion to, um, uh, approve the revised road profile of Road C, also known as Old Stone Circle.
Second, one favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Do we have to sign something for that, or not? It's on paper.
Then, the other item we can work on quickly, request lot fifteen to be used as a model home, which one is that? My eyes.
Oh, there it is.
That's right on the border.
That's in phase three.
Trying to do a really good job.
So, uh, this issue came up before, and I asked town council, asked Erica to talk to town council, and she read through everything and agreed with Andy that you can build, um, more, more, uh, model homes after you've, uh, built and sold the previous ones, so it's kind of a rotating ability, so.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that, or?
The only difficulty with that would be that it's in phase three, which is gonna be approved.
Yeah. So why don't we do that? Let's do that.
Sound, sound idea. Well, to approve phase three, I think we'd have to wait for the sign off of natural heritage, which should be any day now.
No, you don't, those are independent of one another. Natural heritage is really for the, to put in the culvert.
Well, natural heritage is approval.
In the letter, it said, uh, they just didn't lock the parking in phase three.
Right, but you, I, I would really request that you approve from your perspective that it's okay to start.
Condition to.
Or, when I submit the letter from natural heritage, so condition your approval. I just don't wanna have to come back, cause I expect to have the approval in a, in a day.
You don't like seeing our smiling faces?
I love seeing you guys, but, um.
We have a small window, starting July one.
Right.
To get.
I haven't been able to work, um, and do these crossings, uh, we would've started earlier, but we, the, the, I could not get permission from the Concom to do the crossings before July one.
And the other piece of that is the peer review is still out there for those wetland crossings, so Fred's still working, the culvert's better, well, let me back up. There's two different wetland crossings, the wetland crossing in phase four, that culvert's been approved, the walls are still out there, are still working on.
Culvert on.
Getting those approved.
On Road C has been approved.
Uh, the culvert on, in phase three, the design for that has been submitted, Fred will be reviewing that at some point.
They, if you remember.
I know they're similar designs, but it's still a better.
If you remember correctly, we were supposed to last, at the last meeting on last Thursday, I repeatedly requested to have a meeting with this peer review.
For the wall, right.
Engineer, we've been trying to get this done since November. I've never had an approval and review process like this in my life, this is just going on and on and on, this, leading to this for six months. I actually would request the board maybe assign, if somebody would volunteer to come to a meeting with this guy. I, I, I'd like to have like, um, meetings every, twice a week with him, I can't get the thing approved.
The peer review is through, not heritage?
No.
The peer review is with Fred Hamway, um, so right now where we stand.
It's not, it's not through.
Yeah, let's let Erica finish.
Well, it's through conservation, but it's with Fred Hamway.
It's, the, the, the peer review of this, of this, the, the wall and the structures by a structural engineer, Fred's not a structural engineer.
But who proposed the change? Who proposed the change to the bridge and the wall?
We haven't proposed any change.
Then, so this is a peer review of, I thought there was a proposed change, and you made.
No, it's not a change, no.
Isn't that something that's up for debate, then?
No.
I guess I'm a little confused on what the question is, be, uh, basically, Fred Hamway is doing the peer review, he has a sub-consultant who is a structural engineer who's reviewing the walls.
And the culvert.
No, Fred did the review of the culvert.
No, he didn't.
Yeah, I believe he did, but.
I know he didn't, he's not a structural engineer.
You don't need to be a structural engineer to do a culvert, I'm pretty sure Fred did.
Do you want me to show you a hundred emails between my engineer's and the structural review person's?
Yeah, no.
Well, I bet.
I'm not sure how this part didn't.
You're the head of it.
Right.
Pass over that.
So basically, at this point, um, Fred's sub-consultant has responded, um, to the latest responses from your wall designer. Um, so that's back in your wall designer's.
I haven't seen any response.
I believe Fred said he just sent it recently, within like, I think it was like Monday or Tuesday, so you should have emails from Fred.
I don't have any, we haven't received any.
Um, and then.
But this has been going on for six months, and so I'm requesting that the structural engineer person and Fred, which Fred's not a problem, be required to come to a meeting with my engineer on a regular basis to get this squared away, because this is getting, is, is a financial nightmare for me, I can't get, I can't build it.
If this approval is for Concom, I don't think the planning board has jurisdiction, you know, basically over their piece of the project.
It's not, it's not for, it's not for Concom, this is it.
The crossing was for the purpose of Concom.
It's a, it's part of the road design, it's part of the road design, and, uh, it's, uh.
From my understanding, it's a wetland crossing, and my understanding was that your engineer proposed some changes to the wetland crossing and the walls, and that's why we're in this.
That's not accurate.
Okay, um, you know, that's what I understood.
Well, how about, would you come to a meeting? Would I get anybody?
Can I get any assistance on this, please?
Yeah, no, we can work, Erica and, you know, members of the board can work on, uh.
I've been waiting six months, I mean, this is financially keeping me from building a project.
I, I really doubt that it's six months all on our side, I think it's, it's probably an iterative process going back and forth, and so maybe three months on our side, three months of delays on your side, but, um.
I'm just asking, we'll work on, as a taxpayer, right, a significant taxpayer in the town, for you to order the, the consultant who I paid for, right, to, to meetings, I, I understand the problem.
This is, it's getting late, and, you know, we're all getting tired, um, and it's just not getting very productive, yeah. So Erica's gonna look into that, and we'll see how we can expedite that process, I'd be glad to attend the meeting. Uh, anybody else here is welcome too, if it's, you know, if you can just kind of dig into that with Carol and, and Fred, and find out, uh, you know, why it's taking.
Fred is not the Concom's consultant.
He's a town consultant.
He's planning board consultant, yes.
Actually, we may have to hire a separate consultant for Concom.
Exactly, this has actually been a recent discussion, that she would like to have.
She was at her own consulting.
Fred is planning board consultant.
Anyway, along with what we were talking about, obviously, there are a couple of conditions to us moving forward, one being the final engineer review, one being getting the natural heritage letter.
Actually, that's not true, we have a significant amount of work that we can do in, in phases three and one, independent of putting in the culvert.
So long that we have, as we have natural heritage.
As long, no, natural heritage is, let it does not, um, have anything to do with phase one. They're, 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 um, they have no.
I.
Okay, they have nothing to do with phase one natural heritage.
How do you get all your heavy equipment up to the phase one?
Might take it off of spectacle, uh, off of century road.
Okay, so you have access from that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a public street.
Well, I didn't know it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we maybe built up the bottom part, but he still can access the top part. So he doesn't have to do the wetland crossing with the equipment.
Technically, I think one of our current conditions is that construction access be through spectacle hill road. So I don't know if that's an issue.
I don't recall that at all.
No, I mean, just double check.
Because that wasn't just for.
I could be wrong, I just, I could be wrong.
Any event, I cannot find in any of my approvals why I'm here to request ability to build the project that's fully approved. But since I was asked to come here, I am here and we want to build phases, we want to build phase three. And we need to be working on, also on, on phase one, although we're not going to be constructing anything.
Obviously, the phase three would be subject to natural heritage approval.
Approval, right. I don't know of any document that requires me to come get asked. I have a full project approval.
So why do you put your staging in phase one? You couldn't put staging in like sixty seven, it has to be in stage one?
I put it in phase one because natural heritage has no dirt. I can work in phase one right now.
That's why I say that.
Yeah. And also we chose the staging areas for their topography for flat. We don't have flat areas to pile dirt on and be able to go on out.
Did you find anything about access, construction?
Yeah, I was wrong. There's, it talks about, it's basically condition eight of the subdivision approval says construction vehicles associated with the improvements approved in the amended plan are prohibited from traveling on spectacle hill road south of the entrance to the subdivision. So that was something else.
So you're here telling us you don't need our approval, but, and you're telling us to give you our approval. So it's just, it's a little obnoxious.
You're calling me obnoxious?
Yeah, it's a little obnoxious.
We've been doing the whole time. I don't remember where it was written, but you know, we got the phase thing. So by recollection.
I didn't know it would be that big of a deal anyway. I just want to be able to go build my project.
What it gets to is the trouble, it's very easy for you to ask for what you want. But when other people want to contact you, it's very hard to get their attention.
What are you talking about?
Well, we just have an obiter in here as an example. So it's very.
Have you been to my project ever?
No, this, this is what, this is what I'm noticing.
I would like to have the board come and look at this project. It's the nicest project in the town. It's kept immaculate. And on top of it, like, I mean, it's a beautiful project.
Yeah, but let's be clear, the way that it looks and the way that it's constructed are completely two different things. And I'm not saying that the construction isn't okay. It's just the way it looks and the way it's constructed is slightly different.
Okay.
So that and butter, you know, I.
Well, nobody, things don't, I don't know if your lives go perfect, but.
No, we have no, but that's an example of, you know, how people, you know, they try to get your attention. And you know, in due time, you don't, you don't really get back to them and then things happen.
I don't know what you're referring to.
Yeah, well, he's the example, but I'm saying a lot of interactions are like that with you. And so.
Like that's the difference.
Okay. So you know, I, I think, I think we can wait, you know, to hear from, you know, we can wait to hear from.
This is a financial burden to me.
Okay, so Andy, this is, just so that we have on record now.
Yes.
That this is the document I was referring to. It's back from 2010, prior to any construction. This was sent to Century Mail and those were all the conditions for construction. It talks about pre-construction meetings requiring authorization from Planning Board to begin other phases. And to be quite honest, it's the protocol that we established. I mean, back in December, you came before the board to request approval for phase four. So why wouldn't you do it for phase three and phase one? I mean.
Well, if you give me a moment to read it.
Okay.
Please. I, you know, the problem is me, right, that's I'm building an extremely beautiful project. And yet when I come before the board, I'm called obnoxious. I don't understand. Shouldn't you judge me by the product and what I'm doing out of this?
So there was a site meeting where three people, Fred, Carol and Erica said one thing and you disagreed with them. And they're, you know, you didn't come to a consensus on that. So you know, it's that type of communication.
I'm allowed to disagree with somebody, that's the American thing. You don't have to agree with people. I mean.
You need to come to a consensus.
Freedom of speech, right? There's a quote by Winston Churchill and it says, freedom of speech to some people means, right, that they can say whatever they want, but if somebody else wants to say something, they can't. I don't understand.
Let's take a step back for a moment here. You had mentioned the protocol.
Do you have a problem with my development? Come on, tell me what it is.
Andy, please. You had mentioned this, obviously we're here to try to move the thing forward, to try to provide information, to try to create the dialogue. Again, we understand the importance of it, obviously. That's why we're here, that's why I'm here, out here in two weeks. And that's okay. That being said, we, taking a step back for a moment, we are very anxious because of the very limited timeline that we have from July one to I think it's like September 15th to get these culverts in. We really need to move forward on this stuff.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't approve phase one and three besides the national heritage approval?
And the engineering.
I think, yeah, I really think it comes down to the national heritage approval and then the culverts.
Right, and we recognize that.
And I think back to me.
Following that protocol with the pre-construction meetings.
Right, we're having meetings every Thursday on site. We're, I'm meeting with Concom every two weeks. I'm in touch with Judy Pickett all the time. We're certainly trying to communicate as best we can. Obviously, it's not perfect. What I would request is given what, the limited timeline that we have here, because of a lot of different reasons, we really need to take advantage of the warm weather of the July one start date. Because frankly, if we can't get it done during this period of time, it would, it's not good for anybody. You guys want the project done as much as we do.
Yeah, we're not meeting until, you know.
So if I could ask for reconsideration, if I could ask for an approval of phase one and phase three. Phase three obviously contingent upon the, the natural heritage approval and the engineer's approval. We, we, not planning on going forward without natural heritage. Who knows we have to have it. We're, I think, so I talked to the guy today, we're working with him, but you know, we're going to provide that.
The engineer's approval should not be.
Well, to do, to do the.
The walls.
The walls, to do the.
No, no, but for me to begin working in phases one and three, if I'm not working on the wall, there's thousands of other feet of road that I could be working on.
I actually see Andy's point there.
Right, I agree a little bit.
Phase three overall should be contingent on national heritage because that letter describes, okay, this is for phase three.
I see.
But yeah, just the road, the water crossing.
All I'm trying to get across is I understand the board's concern and the need for the scrutiny and being prudent. But there's been a lot of time devoted to this and a lot of scrutiny from the Concom and from this board and from everybody and from, and Fred's out there all the time. There's a lot that's being scrutinized and we need, we really need this timeframe to get this worked out.
I think we should approve it contingent, you know, contingent on.
But those, we got contingency. It would be appreciated.
The only contingent is, you know, that's the protocol we've been doing, so we're going to follow that. But aside from that, I personally don't see any intent to the progress of phase one. Phase three, the only intent is once national heritage gives you your letter and then, you know, obviously have that communicated with us.
Well, we'll provide it, obviously. We got a few things we got to get through with them, so we're almost there. So if we could put that in the form of a motion, it would be very much appreciated.
What were you? Then we like to do, we may do a couple of different motions, one for phase one, one for phase three, or wrap all up together.
That's not, that's not, those are not my.
What is, what is the bridge issuing?
Part we had here, a little pre-construction meetings, everything that would continue to be followed where applicable. As far as phase one, I don't see any other complications with that. As far as phase three, we give our approval to take effect once national heritage issues their approval and that's communicated to us. And then the wetland crossing is the wetland crossing. There's stuff you can do here and stuff you can do here and just.
I'd also like to write the board out. I'd like to have the board out to my site.
You know, many, many times.
Have you?
Yes.
What do you think?
I think you're building great house, but I, there's a way to.
All right.
Let's, let's do the.
Let's skip the motion. Yeah, let's do the motion.
Thank you, John, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that, you know, subject to the protocols, was in the June 21st, 2010 letter from the Town of Bolton to Century Mill Partnership, that we approve construction on phase one. That'll be one motion.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Okay, I would like to make a motion that, subject to the protocols in a June 21st, 2010 letter from Town of Bolton to Century Mill Partnership regarding pre-construction meetings and such, that phase three be approved, which will become effective once national heritage issues their approval and that is communicated to the Town of Bolton.
I'll second that.
What about the construction, like willing, you mean, you need the construction? Yeah. That's a separate piece. If you look at the map, it's just a little piece of the overall phase. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Thank you very much. Really, thank you, very, very much.
We can look together, absolutely.
No, I appreciate it, I really do, that's great. Real quick, the last item was the cross purge. I had, I had generated a form, Town Council reviewed it. And I didn't get to the subdivision acceptance extension until early this week. So I know Town Council probably hasn't had a chance to look at it yet, not a chance. So that's my fault. So I have an original.
Yeah, we just need three copies, so, you know.
Hold on.
I need copies too.
Erica, what is the issue, the open space deed?
Oh, I just thought we could just have, I know it's getting away, I was hoping I.
Do you want me to give a quick narrative as to what's going on?
Just to keep everyone safe.
As far as the open space deed, we had decided, and I've mentioned quickly before, to do a new plan, to record a new plan so that all the references and to the deeds and all the easements and everything would be in one place. And that's going to get recorded along with, probably in the next week or so, next couple of days. All the documents have been drafted and provided to Town Council. The problem is that one of the documents, one of the easement that runs, is it easement, but now runs through the, what's it called? The.
You have the zone one.
The zone one wellhead protection area, that has to be approved by the state.
That was the locking path thing, right?
That's right. Judy's provided that to the state. Once that gets approved, we can then record everything. So, and I know the Bolton Trust is involved in the process because they're going to end up taking title to this thing. And there are a couple of odds and ends issues that we have to work out with them, which we talked about a little bit today. And, but that's, that's down the road.
Also, the deed, signed deed from me to the town was delivered probably.
Well, I've got it, we've got all the documents. So the bottom line is, as soon as we get that approval from the state, we'll be ready to, to move forward on that. So that's where we are.
I'd love to close out as much of the stuff as we can.
This is the final that Judy approved.
Okay, great. I'm just going to go make two copies and then we can sign it.
Right, we talked about inviting the board out to the.
I would love to. Are you going to consider a shingle style or is it all going to be colonial?
In this section over here, phase four, although we're not promised.
This is relatively relative to some of the meetings I've been to involving this project. There were at least two that I can remember.
Use this section for larger homes.
It was more.
The cajun diner style. Yeah, I mean, the architect we're using is a very, that is a good architect. And, you know, so we do have a shingle style home going in here. And that is actually one of the reasons why it's sort of important for us to get into another phase is because we're going to try to, you know, some people that are spending a large house like to have other large houses around them to protect their investment all over.
What's, what's sorry?
I'd say our average house there is probably around 4,000 to 45,000. Our average house up there is probably around 4,600 square.
Probably good for two, still. They're still from up trail. They're doing more like 7,000 square.
I mean, we have.
My house is probably like 6,500.
Yeah, that's fine, you really?
Oh, yeah. All right, that's awesome.
Love the. But more importantly than the size is architecture and quality. And how things are sighted and we try to.
What is it, the James IV? Yep. The James IV of the designs, that's my favorite.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So this is the extension that the planning board approved.
That's great.
This is a special.
I was curious.
Concom's and Sub, my engineers' next mission, kids, which.
Well, I just tell them, I have previous plans with their names. They have their, have their.
Very good, that's great.
We're trying to do a very, we're trying to do an excellent job, working really hard at it.
You don't get a top dollar on a house if you don't give the top dollar house.
I think it's pretty reasonable, this, I mean, I keep my eye on these houses that cost three, four million dollars.
Basically, she just, she forwarded me, you know.
With trap changes.
And I did the tracking, actually, it was just to add this date, which is the future expiration date.
And to change the name, you're going to put in your name?
Yeah, just that story on the.
Architectural consultants, interior designers, engineers, I mean, so.
So this is going to.
So I will send the first, then we'll have a meeting.
It's just really a splash page, but the content's good.
Well, it's on sale, the pictures are great.
Yeah. Well, we've done, I mean, in our trailer, if you ever come, I put together a slideshow of the projects. We should never have any complete project.
That's awesome.
We've never had a layman payment.
Roughly, how many units have you built over the years?
Six thousand.
Wow, yeah.
I have a lot. So this means a lot to me, how this, this, we're trying to like lower in the road travel. It's really to make, make, make it better. We will make it better. I'd be thrilled if you guys, somebody stops by, I'm very proud of the place and.
Well, I've driven through what I can drive through, you know.
I'm there seven days a week.
Gives you that.
We'll look for the.
They're beautiful houses.
But they're sighted.
They've done a good job.
I'm trying like really, really hard.
I actually think it's a good idea.
Take a look.
No, please, I really.
I went out there before, well, I think he had.
I think it's a good bit with you, really helpful to see the construction in progress and.
So you want to come to a Thursday meeting?
Well, we're, I know, people's work's.
Anytime, it is really cool, you see, your mind's out, you think you see, and then to actually see what's going on.
Yeah, it's very different from what you see on a plan, which is what's, how it gets constructed.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you. We do official handshakes.
I wore that corner ass.
Thank you very much. Is that a roll? Well, I don't know, if I were, if I were to conclude a meeting, I think it's important to connect and say thank you.
Okay. So North Woods. So Erica, the only thing left on North Woods, you checked the whole list and it's just the stop signs are on the wrong side.
So basically the stop signs were installed on the wrong side of the road.
The left side?
Yeah, and the claim deed, agreed by Town Council, Chuck just needs to sign it, I just need a reporter and that is it. So I had email correspondence with Chuck today. He said he has no problem fixing the stop signs, but he does still request that the board reduce the bond out as much as the board is appropriate.
We can, we can, we can return the bond contingent on your approval of the stop signs.
Okay.
Because basically she checked it, they're on the wrong side. So once that happens and you feel good about it, I think we can vote.
I'll make a motion to return the bond in full upon correction of the stop sign issue.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any against? That's out of the way, Sincarfa Solar, is anybody here coming for that?
No, that's just a quick update, let me just write this motion.
So we don't have any to vote on that, it's just an update.
Who's second to that?
I think there, well, it could potentially be a vote, I guess. John, did you make that motion or did David make that motion?
John made it.
Do you second it?
Did you second it?
So what's wrong tonight?
That's all that. Make it easy on Erica.
I think we should just keep that order, and all of her names.
Actually, I was gonna say, if we have any. I think it's tonight, one of you, you two guys.
Yeah, we.
Just any order, doesn't matter.
So we just have complaints.
It's banker.
Okay, so.
So.
So basically, Conservation recommends that the fence be raised to four inches, they came to that consensus. I talked to Eric Aubrey and he said he's basically willing to, let's see where did I write this down, willing to raise portions of the fence, he would like to raise it every hundred feet for a width of eight feet from between two and four inches.
Say that again, every?
So every hundred feet, he's willing to raise the fence two to four inches for a width of eight feet.
What is that, two poles worth or something?
Or one pole?
One, that's one section.
But our guy's like four inches?
All the way around.
All the way around.
So what would, if he's gonna look for a compromise, why wouldn't he be looking for every hundred feet, four inches?
I think it's the price and the time to do it, it's pretty extensive, that perimeter fence.
I definitely don't think we should require the entire thing, I think there's gotta be a compromise.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the compromise is, if the point is to, I mean, two feet, if the point is to let wildlife go through, not a lot, I see two inches, but four inches seems more reasonable.
What, he's saying two inches?
He's saying anywhere from two to four, that sometimes it's hard to get.
What was the spec?
That's what I'm saying. Get away with that, like, can you tighten that up? Every hundred feet?
Your cat could get.
And then every other hundred feet is only inch.
You're trying to get in but not out.
Do you think that's reasonable?
Stupid thing to be able to.
Four inches, hundred feet?
No, no, no.
I don't know.
You said every hundred feet, eight feet will be up four inches.
How many total, how many total, I guess I need to, no, the total.
Well, I guess the linear, yeah, linear, but.
Like, one percent.
I think it's over 6,000 linear feet, to be quite honest, so.
I guess, yeah, I don't know what they'll, what they can do.
I have a question.
So that's why.
Is the alternative, if he doesn't comply at this point, technically, that he gets shut down in some way, or what is the repercussion?
No, we have a bond, don't we, or do we?
There's really no repercussion at this point, they're, they're kind of doing this in good faith, you know? They are closing out the project, but we have nothing, we have no bond, you know, they've already been issued their building permit, so at this point.
Are they operating under a special permit?
Yes, but construction's complete, so I don't know how that.
I thought they, they needed to close out the special permit or the building permit?
The building permit's been issued, the strike of occupancy has been issued, so at this point, and I talked to our building inspector about it, and he wouldn't be willing to negotiate those two things, it's really, it's really, I think it comes down to Eric Aubrey's company just working with us to make these.
Okay, so have you told Conservation what his, he's come back with?
Um, you know, I did not, I should have done that.
You do that. See what they think of the counter offer.
I mean, they're, I already know Carol's gonna say, she's gonna say, well, we, you don't think that's acceptable because we wanted.
Well, the two to four inches isn't acceptable to me, you know, they need to be able to maintain four inches, that's not hard to do.
Right.
Like, it's gonna.
Four feet.
Yeah, it's just like, how, how low are they, you know, lowering the bar for like, I guess teenagers to do the work? That's not, that's not nice to teenagers, that's just.
You can just come over it, I mean, it's not that hard, you're a motivated teenager.
I meant his teenagers are doing the labor, they're making it just the fence for them.
Okay.
And they need two.
It's more like a possum to get under, teenagers can go over possums under.
So the one other important thing was reappointing the design review board members for another year.
Give us your opportunity for a motion.
Oh, okay, we, do we have a motion to reapprove the design review board members until 6:30 15?
My elder statesman over here.
Good for John.
We're gonna mess her up. Make a motion to reappoint the design review members until June 30th, 2015?
You have a second?
We have a second. That, Erica, you have a gun?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'm changing my name.
Any against? You're changing your name?
Yeah, just so we have a different John, so we can take motions on new names too.
Well, I'm H, you're no H, he's Uffin.
Uffin. So, set, we should definitely set our schedule for the summer.
Yeah, I just realized, I completely forgot to print out that table, I had.
Seems like you were pretty, much, pretty good to just go.
I'm the only one who hasn't weighed in.
I think so.
You have any vacations?
So.
I'm available.
At this point, I think we should just make a decision whether or not.
Oh, let's do the, yeah, the date for assisted living.
But we need to set the public hearing date for Ballhouse Park, so.
Can I ask a question on that? So is that, so they already have the lane divided into two?
No.
No, it's one parcel.
So does that mean that there'll be no village overlay there, it's gonna be all the assisted living?
They've decided, they've decided to do assisted living.
The whole thing?
And Eric will tell you why.
Oh, so the current office space, so they're gonna carve off a piece and put up another building? I thought that's what.
They're gonna divide the lot, they're gonna leave the office building and they're gonna build assisted living.
But they could, they could potentially tear down the office building and do village overlay.
They could still do something.
That's what I'm saying, they weren't.
What they're saying is it doesn't make financial sense to redevelop it according to the overlay because of the cost of waste treatment for that type of development.
For what will waste treatment when?
Sewage.
Sewage, but what about the assisted living, does that have sewage?
I don't know, I guess.
They got sewage.
Yeah, they do, but they just do a big lease.
They arrange a cap into that.
Well, they'd like to, but.
I guess my point is there's still some area there for potential village overlay, where the office park is.
Yeah, just see that they're putting in, they're putting in the residential first.
Yeah, there you go.
They are, and then they're gonna put in the shops later in the office park.
Oh.
I think that would, it would have been a great site for, you know, a marquee or something.
It's disappointing, it's kind of disappointing.
They were all excited, Eric, they said it's about waste treatment, I don't, can you explain that?
I don't understand if they have any, what, how many?
The cost onsite waste treatment.
Yes, it's very expensive.
What's the difference between that waste treatment and the waste treatment of assisted living?
So you can't do a leach field for something that big.
What they're proposing is keeping office parking.
Right, exactly, because it's so many gallons per day that you need to design for that, you need a treatment plant, you can't just have leaching.
But that's, that's what Mark O'Hagan said.
The assisted living facility, by definition, there's people there 24 hours a day have any less waste.
You're talking about Sugar Road.
Well, you're talking about restaurants.
That was the story there years ago, that was, that was kind of the variable with whether that project.
It would be other residential.
Right, well, he said you can end up with a condo here, like 700 a month, just to service that waste.
So how big is this gonna be?
I will actually, I will vouch for that, we have a, I believe, a leach field, ours is 400.
400?
We're 28 units, HLA.
400.
They have a leach field, which is cheap.
My, so if you live in an association, everyone pays in and do, like a membership do every month. I'm just saying, if there's a sewer treatment, it could be double that.
It could be seven.
That's significant.
Seven hundred.
So you pay forage and everything else, and then you pay on top of that a fee for living there, yeah. This is like here, like, monthly, every month.
So you're saying there wouldn't be enough.
It's like being in the ice club with no else.
It's two kinds of history, the cost of these wastewater on-site facilities compared to.
It covers snow, agriculture, waste, trash.
He has no maintenance.
I don't do anything, I wake up, and I try and cause trouble.
Well, I know, I own a townhouse that I rent though, so it's the same. Well, I like moving my life, I like doing all.
All right.
Anyway, there's no way we can change D and S.
Okay, so.
To keep moving.
The first Wednesday, I would, we would be able to set the hearing date for, which is July 30th, is everyone available July 30th?
What time? That's my wife's birthday.
So you're not available.
That's really the first?
Yes, because I need to be able to put the legal notice in the paper, so.
So it's a here.
It's a here.
If you all have a quorum.
I'm good.
Am I okay?
You're, yeah, that would be fine, but we need enough of a quorum to be able to make a decision, so.
Okay.
That would be two thirds, so that would be what, four out of five, so we would need four members present.
I'm available, including James.
James could sit on the board if, if we needed him to.
If he wasn't here.
Yeah.
It could be three of us, flush teams, potentially.
Three what?
If James is.
Right, if one of us gets sick or something.
So that really is the soonest.
That's the soonest, and we need, we need to set that date within.
Kick stuff.
90 days of when it was filed at Town Park, and I believe that was done last week, so the time, the time's starting to tick.
And if we had to come to a decision, John just has to watch the meeting, sign something saying he'd watch the meeting.
Well, as long as, as long as it's a quorum, you can tell a conference in while you're at dinner on your wife's birthday.
That's not do that.
This is a big one, this is two five, baby.
That's funny.
I say that in jest.
So are you not here, John?
I think I'll be here.
I should.
I'm gonna put that on my schedule.
All right, so we're on agreement that we can set that hearing date for?
It's not taking. Two five.
Now, does the planning board want to have two meetings in July or just have the one?
That is, much else we got?
I can deal with the one.
What'd we say?
Just really, I think at this point, I'm trying to think, I think that's all we have for submissions, so, besides the smaller, I mean, there are some open-ended things just from tonight.
When are we gonna start working on the subdivision rules and rights, was that the fall? You wanted to do that?
That's our summer homework.
Just do the July 30th unless something comes up.
Well, she already has a pretty good list, it's like 38.
And then.
Research, learning, discuss each other.
I'll start looking at it a little.
That's good, I'm impressed.
I'll get through one or two.
I thought you could lead on it.
Subdivision can.
Okay, so.
So I was suggesting that we just do the July 30th unless something comes up, and then we'll do the earlier one in the month, and then, you know, typically, yeah, we skip, we do one in August and, again, unless something comes up. It's a pretty slow period typically.
Cool.
So do the second, the fourth Wednesday in July and August, is that what you're saying? I think that would be good.
Yeah, I'll be here for this.
I'm sorry, I, I said, I, we have six, I'm sorry, we have 65 days to set the hearing, but we have, once we have that hearing, we have 90 days to make a decision, sorry.
Great.
So, we don't wanna, I'm just saying, we don't want to set the second hearing date too far in advance, in case there needs to be iterative things that need to be taken care of. That's just my only concern, I mean, we can always extend that 90-day period as long as the applicant agrees to that, so.
So if we have it in July 30th, we have to be, we have to be done by October 30th, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
She doesn't seem too high.
That sounds good.
For the new guys, we always end up bagging out the last meeting in November because the Thursday of November is Thanksgiving Eve, Wednesday of November.
And can we, I'm sorry, I know it's really late, but can we just revisit Sincarfa just for a minute, because I know Conservation is gonna come back and say, that's what they recommend, they recommend that the entire fence be raised four inches, because.
I think there's a compromise.
We've gone around this circles.
And you're right.
We've gone around this so many times, I just know that's what they're gonna say, so, and I, I would hate to have to leave Eric sort of still waiting for an answer until July.
Okay, so it needs to be four inches and I'd say 25% of the.
Okay, instead of 100?
No, 25%.
That's what I mean, instead of what?
He's just changing the unit measurement.
Yes, I'm saying 100 feet, 25% of the total.
100%.